Call the order, the special meeting. Public comment pertaining to closed session items. Comments are limited to items to be discussed in closed session. Speaker will be allowed three minutes each per item for those that wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance. You may call 559-366-1849. Please note that there will be an approximately a 20 second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling in mute your device used for viewing the meeting. Is there any public comment from anyone in the chambers? Did anyone call in? No. All right, then we will recess the closed session to discuss Mario. What, Mario? No, there you are.
I got it.
Excuse me, Christine, sorry.
Yes. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two, one case.
All right, we will return approximately at seven o'clock.
I'll now call to order the regular meeting of the Tulare City Council. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I will lead the pledge of allegiance and Susan Hinner from the River Valley Church will deliver the invocation.
Please salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night, Lord. And I just ask, Father, that you would just come and impart your wisdom to our council and department heads as they have been chosen to lead our city. Father, I thank you for their commitment and their heart and all of the time and effort that they put in to helping make Tulare be the best city it can be. And Father, I thank you for all of the great things that are happening and the improvements and the revitalization of our downtown, Father. This is, as I always say, a great time to be living in our city. So, Father, I ask for your continued presence over this meeting, that you would be here as you continue to lead and guide and just give us a great meeting tonight. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll now move on with the agenda. We have some proclamations to give this evening. So we'll first be, Councilman Maderas will be presenting the proclamation for the LGBTQ Pride Month.
I'd like to invite Brian Poth and whoever else he's got here with him. From the source, I believe. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
Before I read this proclamation, and I'll give you the opportunity to speak after I get done, but what's been two or three years ago, when I was mayor, I had the privilege of issuing, with the support of this council, issuing a proclamation declaring the city of June for the city of Tulare, the LGBTQ Pride Month. And I think that was the first time we had done that. And I don't know that any, I know it was the first time. I don't know if any other city in the county of Tulare had done so. And I'm proud of the city of Tulare to have its inclusive nature and considering all members of our community under the circumstances. And this has been a very personal thing to me. And I'm glad to be here tonight representing our city council and issuing this proclamation as is being done wonderfully in my mind all over the country and the recognition that we're having. I have a son who manages a restaurant in West Hollywood. And he was very busy this weekend because of all the traffic and the special menus he had. It's West Hollywood and the restaurants, I'm doing a plug for my son here. It's called We Ho Bistro, West Hollywood, see. And he was very tired after the weekend. But this proclamation I'm going to read, whereas the city of, and I want to thank Melissa, who's made, over the course of time, has made some adjustments to this and come up with what I think is very, a very good proclamation. Whereas the city of Tulare supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal and dignitfully in rights, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer individuals have had immeasurable impact to the culture, civic, and economic success of our country. And whereas the city of Tulare is committed to ensuring Tulare is a welcoming, inclusive, and safe community for all individuals, including our LGBTQ family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the city of Tulare appreciates the value and dignity of each person, recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and acknowledges positive contributions made by members of the LGBTQ community to actively promote principles of equality, acceptance, and love. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Tulare, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as LGBT, I'm sorry, LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Tulare, and encourage our residents to celebrate the LGBTQ community and accept each other for who we are. Dated this fourth day of June 2024, signed by our mayor, vice mayor, and other city council members. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, council. We're really honored to accept this on behalf of, I guess, our entire community. I grew up in Tulare. I'm like fifth generation on my mother's side and moved away to live in LA for about 30 years. And coming back to the Central Valley was quite a shock. But I'm really glad that I did. I actually came back 10 years ago this week. And when I returned, I met some wonderful people who thought it would be a good idea that we do something and start an LGBT center. So it's been our honor and privilege to serve Tulare County, Kings County, and Fresno County. We're the largest LGBT center in, between Sacramento and Los Angeles. And I just want to thank you so much for recognizing June as LGBTQ Pride Month. Not all cities in Tulare County do, and I think you were the first to do so. So it makes me a proud Tularian, and thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. I remember little Brian Poth very well, so you can't be that old. You can't, because that makes me really old. Thank you for being here. We'll now present the proclamation to the Dairy Association for Dairy Month.
I have it easier than Councilman Maderas. I just have to say Dairy Month, so it's a whole lot simpler. I'd like to invite Olivia Machado, the Dairy Princess, up, please. Anybody that has been around Tulare any length of time at all knows milk industry is probably the backbone of Tulare, if not Tulare County. So it's an honor to be able to present this proclamation tonight in honor of June as a celebrated National Dairy Month since 1937 as a way to promote the consumption of daily, fix my glasses here, products and to thank those involved in the dairy industry for their labors. And whereas the Dietary Guidelines for America, a report published by the United States Department of Agriculture and Department of Health and Human Services, recommends consuming three servings of dairy products each day as part of the balanced diet. And whereas since 1969, the California Milk Advisory Board was established, whose mission is to spread the word about extraordinary dairy products made with real California milk, should be Tulare milk. And whereas California has been the lead dairy-producing state in the nation with Tulare County as the largest dairy-producing county in the nation, with a gross value of approximately 2.7 billion in milk production, representing 31% of the total crop and livestock value. And whereas Tulare County prides itself to be its vibrant agricultural sector, of which the dairy industry represents a key part. And whereas in addition to fluid milk, dairy processors in Tulare produce a variety of products, including cheese, ice cream, butter, yogurt, powdered milk. And whereas the dairy industry contributes in innumerable ways to the state and local community economic prosperity. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Tulare, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as Dairy Month in the city of Tulare and encourage all citizens to celebrate the valuable contributions that the dairy industry has made to our community and beyond. Signed by the mayor, the vice mayor, and the remainder of the city council.
Thank you, council. I would like to remind you all to drink milk and to look for the real California milk seal. And I would like to invite you all to our Salute to Dairy event that's happening later in June. You can contact the chamber for more information on that event. Thank you.
If everyone wants to open their milk bottles, it's time for the salute to the dairy industry.
You want us all down?
Yeah, if everybody.
Let's go with our dairy.
Everybody has milk. Sorry about those. We didn't bring enough. You guys are all welcome to come and do, you just have to be canceled. I will be gone. Ready, ready? That was very dairy. Let me get you guys. Okay, got it. Anybody else? All you shy people. Thank you, council.
It is now time for public comment. The public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Tulare City Council that are not on the agenda. The council asks that comments are kept brief and positive. The council cannot legally discuss or take official action on request items that are introduced tonight. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item from the consent calendar repulsed for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearing and general business items will be heard at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, each speaker will be allowed three minutes with a maximum time of 15 minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by council. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. For those that wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you may call 559-366-1849. I have one yellow card. Donette Silva Carter.
Good evening, Mayor Sayer, members of council. Sorry I've missed you guys lately, but I've been watching from the comfort of my chair with my elevated legs. So. Anyway, I have a few items I would love to share with you tonight on behalf of the Tulare Chamber of Commerce and things that we have coming up. So exciting times in our community. And I know a couple of these announcements are things you've been anxiously waiting. So first we'll start, though, with the next Business After Hours networking mixer. We want to invite everyone out to the International Agro Center. That's going to be next week on the 13th. And it is going to be a summer Fourth of July picnic theme. So wear your red, white, and blue. Come out. They're going to have a lot of great themed activities and fun at the IAC in the museum area. So a great time to mix and mingle, and we're expecting over 100 people at least to attend that event. We also want to have you put on your calendar, this is the big one, on the 20th at 8:00 AM, 20th of June, we will cut the ribbon and officially open AlTura Centers for Health at the new location. So I know Graciela Soto Perez, the CEO, is very excited, and we are sending out that notice to all of you, so you can put that on your calendar. So we sure hope you can join us for this great celebration as we see the growth that's happening with that very important healthcare entity. And we also are going to officially welcome into the chamber, and this is through a partnership, our Tulare Police Department Explorers. So we have extended to them a membership because they do great work for us during Cars on K as well as other entities. So on the 21st, we have a very busy day because we will also have Salute to Dairy that night, as Olivia mentioned. But at 11:30, we're going to gather and we are going to see the graduation of the explorers. I'm sure the chief will probably touch on that. And we will also do the ribbon cutting to officially welcome our youth into the chamber. So we're very excited about that. Speaking of youth, we will be opening up the Youth Ambassadors for Business program. The application period will open next week and go until the second week of July, and then we'll start the program at the end of July. Leadership Tulare has already opened, so we are taking applications for the next class. Very busy. We are also working on our business series that is going to launch in July. So a lot of different workshops will be happening. We have a six-month series we're introducing and have a good number of partners for that. And that's all in anticipation of opening up the Tulare Business Innovation Zone, and that will happen as soon as Mark tells us it's okay that it's going to happen. But, you know, we anticipate somewhere probably the last quarter of this year. We do have, our center manager has been hired. We do have, our center manager has been hired. And so we will bring her hopefully to the next meeting when we do our chamber presentation as well. So, anyway, all the information is available on tularechamber.org. And thank you so much, and have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Donette. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay, if there are no other, is there anyone else in the chambers that wants to make public comment? If not, we'll close public comment time. Are there any communications?
Yes, we received one communication today. Unfortunately, it's bad news. We received a warn app notification from Ruiz Foods, who has notified of their planned closure. That's the facility located at 4002 South K Street. There'll be a total of 215 lost jobs. The first series of jobs will terminate August 30th, the balance of the jobs on September 30th. Thank you.
All right, we'll take council reports and items of interest. We'll start with Councilman Harrell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 23rd, had the great time out at the Corporation Yard, at the Taco Feed that they have every year to have a chance to meet and sit around and talk to all the employees out there and Tricia and all her people. It's always, it's a great event. I did try to get a vest again this time. Not successful. So I will make another attempt at it. On the 27th, I attended the memorial service at the cemetery, Memorial Day Service Cemetery, and I had the honor of sitting with the mayor as she gave her speech at the program. It was very well attended.
Vice Mayor?
With my work schedule, I've missed a lot of functions and events that have happened. But been, you know, fetching and working with a lot of increased constituent calls, questions between parking and traffic and a few other issues that have come up. But, and I had my, also, if you see this little patch on my neck, it's just, I had a skin cancer surgery. So that took me out for a little, a little time. So it's kind of been one thing after another. But glad to be here with you fine folks and looking forward to our budget discussion tonight.
Well, we're glad you're here as well. So on the 23rd, I did attend the Public Works Taco Feed. It's one of my favorite things to go to. Get to see all the amazing workers that are the foundation of our city, really. And then I was able to go to Alpine Vista. And I was a guest reader and was able to read to several classes there. On the 27th, we did have the memorial service at the cemetery, and I was honored to speak at that. On the 29th, I attended the Parks and Recreation Meeting on the encampment. And that was really, it was a very good meeting, and it was very encouraging to hear all the things that multiple agencies are doing to ensure the success of that endeavor. Councilman Maderas?
Yes. On the 22nd, I attended the International Agri Center Board Member, of which I'm an ex-official member. On the 23rd, I also attended the Public Works Luncheon and had tacos. Thank you, Tricia. Appreciate that. 29th was a personal day. 30th, I attended the Midco, again with Tricia, attended the Midco GSA meeting at Tulare Irrigation District. And then this morning, I attended the Citizens Advisory Committee Meeting for the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District up in Fresno. That's a mouthful.
Thank you.
It's yours.
Councilman Segala?
On the 28th, I had the opportunity to attend the Tulare City School District Board Meeting, where the board voted and announced and voted that Ira Porche would be the new superintendent of Tulare City School District. So I had the honor to be there. I saw chief, I saw our chief there, as well as Captain Machado there to congratulate him. And so I look forward to his leadership at the City School District. And in terms of item of interest, I'm not sure how to bring this up or where or how to bring it up. But I've had a couple of calls in the last month about leaf blowers in the community. And I'm not sure if I, I'll just bring it up and maybe Michael can help me figure out or whoever's in charge of that particular thing, what the policies are, and in their case, what the rules are for folks to just blow stuff into the street. And so we've been seeing, they've been seeing a lot of that. So they called me. I don't know if you guys have gotten any calls or seen that, but you go down streets and I'm sure they do a great landscaping job, but everything gets blown into our streets and affects our street sweeping. And so I told folks I'd bring it up as an item of interest. Not sure how to pursue it. But if there's anything on the books about that, if anybody can share that with me, it'd be great. Because there is concern that they're just contributing to the, I guess what they're saying, the littering of the cities by blowing leaves and not picking them up. So that was what I'm saying.
I've seen it also. It's right here on M Street. It's a practice many of the lawn maintenance individuals use. And I can't believe there's not some ordinance that affects that.
Right.
Isn't there, Josh?
Yeah. There is.
In almost every city, there's an ordinance that prohibits you being able to blow that type of debris into the streets for obvious reasons, gets into the city's infrastructure system, violates MPDDS issues. And so I'm sure we have one. Manny's not with us today, but we'll make sure we send to Council a copy of our ordinances.
Yeah, so if that gets brought up, and then we'll figure out if need to do something in the future. And let's do anything, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar to be discussed and voted upon by a separate motion. Are there any council members that want to pull a consent item?
For a technical purpose, somewhat along the lines of what Mr. Segala has indicated, I was going to pull 13.5.
13.5? Any others?
Madam Mayor, request to pull 13.4.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, I, along with the 13.5 and Mr. Deros, is pulling, I'd like to also request that 13.7 and 13.8 be pulled as well.
Okay. Does anybody want to go ahead and make a motion for the remaining?
Anything to vote on?
Yeah, well, Madam Mayor, then I, there's nothing else. I move that we adopt the consent calendar with items 13.1, 13.2, 13.3, and 13.6.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We will start with 13.4.
Madam Mayor, council members, the only reason why I requested this is I need to accuse myself from any discussion or action with this, being involved through my employer and involved with the Neighborhood Village project. So it's best that I not participate in 13.4.
Okay, thank you. He doesn't need to leave, does he?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, then, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to adopt item 13.4 and make the award as indicated therein.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four to. The next one that was pulled was 13.5.
I pulled this item. I have reviewed the agreement, and I think this is typical of what we've done in the past. I would note that this after-school program is dated July 1st, 2024. The agreement itself calls for any notification to go to the superintendent Paula Adair, and it's to be signed by Paula Adair. This is my opportunity to congratulate the new superintendent of the Tulare City Schools, Ira Porche. He will be the superintendent effective July 1st. And my recommendation is that we modify this agreement to indicate his name under the circumstances, not only for notification purposes, because I'm sure he's going to have a long tenure in his capacity, but also for his signature. And again, it's with my congratulations to him.
Councilman Maderos, good catch.
Thank you.
Also, I asked, wanted this item to be pulled for some discussion. As many of you know, this particular program that we run is one of the programs that I really appreciated in the past. I've tried through the budget process to increase its funding in order to increase its outreach. It's a critical program that provides working families with support in those critical hours when kids get off their school, get out, get out in their after-school and have a place that's safe, that's clean, that provides them a snack, where they can do their homework or just hang out instead of hanging out on the streets. And so I really appreciate the partnership that the city has had and the leadership of Jason and his department to continue to have that. At the present, at the school district meeting on the 28th, I did get an opportunity to see their staff present the number of programs, whether it's Choices or Best, a number of programs that all have the same intent to try to keep kids busy, try to do some enrichment, and just try to keep them out of trouble, basically, for some of the working parents that may not be able to afford childcare. And so I think, as Jason knows, I've always tried to increase the capacity, and I've always gone back that staffing or capacity that doesn't allow us to grow the program. And in the contract, I saw that, I think in the staff report or vice versa, there was 2,000 students, but yet where the agreement, I think, is for 1,000. Or I know we're getting a reimbursement rate that adds up to about 2,000 students. So my question was, what it was that, I did get some information from Mark, but I just wanted, and from the department, just wanted to say that, at least from the department, it's 2,000 total, but in 1,000 per semester, I guess, if you would call it.
Yes, that is correct.
And some of those students could be the same, so not necessarily 2,000 different kids. It could be the same 1,000 kids if they roll over to the next year, right, or semester.
That is correct.
Right. And so that's the one thing that I hope in the future, we might be able to expand at least the best program to help, I know a lot of kids in Alpine Vista, Pleasant, a lot of clinics all over the place benefit from that. And so that was one of the, one of the things that I just wanted to note, that it's a great program. Glad we're continuing to partner. And in the final question, which I just wanted some verification, I do know in the past, parents were asked to pay, I think it was $500 a year. So again, per semester, I guess, the easiest way to put it, $250 and $250. And I understand that the school district got the funding to pay for the entire program?
That is correct.
So this year, and was it last year that parents were not being charged?
Parents are not, were not charged this year, and they will not be charged next fiscal year.
Great. Well, that's great news. Hopefully that'll continue to help. So, so those are some of the questions and clarifications that I wanted to bring up. And thank you to Mark and the staffer for doing so. If there aren't any other questions, Madam Mayor, then I would like to move that we adopt item 13.5.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Did we do, did we pull 13.6 or was that one? It was just 13.7?
We approved a seven.
Okay, 13.7. It just seemed like all of them, so I was.
Yeah, we already voted.
Okay.
Well, Madam Mayor, I asked that 13.7 be brought, pulled out of consent count. This is the annual report that's filed by the Tulare Downtown Association Board of Directors regarding the Advisory Board for the Parking and Business Improvement Area. I brought this up because I did get a chance to see Mark, our Chief Financial Officer's budget, and going through last year's budget and this year's budget, and doing comparisons and so forth. And then looking at the budget presented in the report, I think one of the things that kind of stood out for me was the fact that, you know, we have a source of funds through these levies that are assessed to downtown businesses or geographic area that don't necessarily cover the cost of what we may be spending to keep our parking lots clean, lit, you know, lit up at night or just restriped or whatever needs to do in terms of maintenance. And so that was one of the main questions I had, talking to Mark, our city manager yesterday, was getting some information on whether that was accurate. And, and I did get an email, and I just started reading it. I got it a little while ago. They had some of those. But that was my big question, was those assessments don't cover the cost of maintenance? Is that, and then if it don't, if they don't, then what would be sort of the way to do so? I mean, it's kind of a money loss in my mind, I guess.
So, so Council, I'll take a shot at that one, especially since Mark is new to the city. And so he may not have had a chance to really dig into our special taxing districts downtown. But that is correct, that, you know, the cost associated with those parking lots is not fully covered. The assessments to come in, they cover more things than just parking. And in the email that was provided to Councilmember Segala, and in the budget that you have in your agenda packet, it enumerates some of those costs for running, you know, the organization itself, so on and so forth. In terms of the fix, I don't know that we'll ever have a perfect, precise fix, because it kind of depends on what you're looking for. Council, we recall that we're going through a process now to recreate and establish the taxing districts. The biggest problem, in my opinion, with the existing taxing districts is that it's an assessment on the business, not the property. And so that creates a problem. It kind of is sort of almost like a voluntary program. Some businesses pay it, some don't, and the enforcement mechanism is challenging. And so the process we're going through now with the consultant and all the downtown property and business owners is to sort of reevaluate all that and work with the property owners to understand what it is they're looking to have done. So for example, we collect taxes from all of our citizens. Well, we have to provide a base level of service to all of our citizens for the taxes received. We can't take tax money established in one part of the town and start trying to spend all of it on the other side of the town, right? Where you do see enhanced areas of maintenance, it's typically because they pay a special assessment. So for example, in Del Lago, they pay additional tax money to have a higher level of landscape maintenance. We, that's the same concept, for the ease of discussion, of what we have downtown, except the current mechanism isn't working. So our hope is, when we come back, you know, we have, we have ways to go. You have several more months, for sure, in working with the downtown business owners and property owners to figure out what it is they're looking for, what's a reasonable approach in terms of taxation for what type of services. It takes a little time to work through all that. My gut feeling is, is we're not going to have everybody agree to cover everything that is a cost downtown. So we'll have to work over time to figure out what costs exist outside of the taxing district, and are those costs the city itself is willing to absorb? Or do we want to find other mechanisms to try to address those costs? And so it's a, it's a complex issue. We'll get more into the weeds on it in the future. Not enough time to talk more about tonight.
Just a comment, and I, it's just the nature. On page eight of Lino Pimentel's report, it indicates that, and maybe Melissa, before this is signed by the mayor, could just get correction on this. But in that first paragraph, it indicates that they offer recommendations for the management and operation of activities associated with the Tulare Parking and Business Area during the fiscal year July 1st through June 30th, 2024. I think they neglected to change that to this next year, as opposed, because down below, they do indicate 2024 through 2025. So that's a clerical error there.
Yes, and I'll make that correction, because this will be coming back to you for adoption at the public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, then, a couple other items on this issue. The other thing, I think, what, what the question I had was, in terms of the mechanism, and I think Mark, our city manager, touched on it a bit, is how those assessments are collected. I know Mr. Harrell serves on that board. I served on that board for a little bit and got a sense that there was some issues, some complications in assuring that all the assessments were collected, because that, that revenue helps keep the organization going in some of their projects. So I wanted to see if there was any improvement in that particular goal of assuring that there was as close to 100% compliance when it came to collecting those assessments. My understanding was, as, as a city manager explained, it's voluntary, but yet it's also a requirement. It's, it's not like, hey, I should not pay for it or not. The issue is, it's there, and you have a responsibility to pay for it, but it's not being enforced as strongly. So I wanted to see if there was any update on that particular process.
Yes, so we've been through this issue. In the two and a half years I've been here, I've been through it two years in a row. We've worked with the City Attorney's Office. With the way it's currently constructed, there really is nothing else the city can do in terms of Um, we've worked with the city attorney's office with the way it's currently constructed. There really is nothing else the city can do in terms of. Trying to uh. Require individuals to pay this, these funds and for the city to collect the funds. Um what we did last year that helped quite a bit is the association sent out a number of letters. And they appealed to management and the management's policy in the past was that we were not going to send letters out. We changed that policy and we did send lenders out, and I think the fact that the letters came from the city helped. Probably uh catch more people's attention and so that there was a better response. Uh but we did not accomplish a hundred percent collection and um. And so I I don't know that we have a better approach other than recreating and redoing the districts what we're working on now. I know. I believe Mr. Harmon is on the line. He may be able to add some additional thoughts on this if if he's available.
Go ahead, John.
John?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, this is John Harmon uh from Teleri, the director of the Teleri Downtown Association. Um I'm sorry I can't be there tonight and uh sorry if my voice is a little weak. Going through a few things here and uh I'm glad to hear that uh Patrick's in a similar camp that I am. Um, just wanted to add to this. First of all, just wanted to tell Mark, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, you know what? Let me uh. Let me turn my monitor off here. Let me turn the computer off. Uh so I just wanted to say thank you to Mark. Uh and to Melissa for sending out the letters that they did last year because that did make a significant positive impact. And uh just to give you some insights as to what's going on, uh for years, I I knew that there was a uh. A lack of communication between the people that are actually in the stores or the businesses and the management that that they work for. And I'll give you a uh an example. We had one um tech cashew business uh in downtown. And uh their corporate was completely unaware of the assessment, but as soon as they got the letter from city, um they understood completely. And were quick to pay the assessment. And and so most of the nonpayments that I see have been a result of. Um, you know, upper management not understanding what's going on and the uh the lower um employees and management not. Not communicating to upper management uh what exactly the situation is. So that's, that's one thing that we see. Then the other thing we see is the way that the ordinance itself was crafted um and who it says falls under the um the 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 uh. Objective of paying the assessment. And um so we have people that say, hey, look, I I don't do any of these things. That's not how my business is structured. Therefore, I owe no assessment, even though they might be um they might be receiving benefit from the assessment district. So I I feel that Mark's on the right path as far as taking a look at this. Um, we are the oldest BID, which is a Business Improvement District in the state of California. Um, we've been around longer than than anybody else has now. And of course, with age comes those um. Those needs to update and become more more modern and fit in with what's going on. Uh currently, the Property-Based Investment District, the PBID has gained momentum. And that may be a better way when it comes to funding and and consistent funding uh for us to achieve our goals. Um, that being said, some of the things that we've done as far as the association goes in twenty fifteen. Uh prior to twenty fifteen, the Assessment District was actually producing events uh using the assessment money. Um, the board agreed that we could use our assessment money better um to to benefit the businesses that were paying that assessment. Um if we made some changes and so um I was able to set up the Teleri Downtown Foundation, which now handles. As a five oh one C three, all of the events and promotions that we do in the downtown. Um, the money from the association was redirected into um the um our real estate efforts. Our uh Clean and Safe Program and um some of the other things that we uh functions that we perform in the downtown. Um, we also take money that we receive in the form of grants, uh most notably from uh Land Lakes and from Bank of Sierra. And we put that into, we transfer that from the foundation where we qualify for that funding into the uh the association. Um so that we can utilize that money in addition addition to our assessment money uh to fund that Clean and Safe Program. Um and then, as you know, we have a, well, most of you, most of you know, excuse me. Most of you know that we have the Property-Based Investment District at the Towers Square, which we manage. Um, so tho- those are all some different things that we've done to work around um the funding. That, you know, the funding weaknesses or deficits that we have and an attempt to make um the uh the the agency continue to work. Uh one of the issues that we have, and I'm sure that if you've ever saw, if you've ever been a councilperson. You've probably gotten an earful from the people downtown. They do not like um the assessment rate that they pay. And our board has been very reluctant over the years to increase that just because of the negative uh feedback that we've gotten. And, you know, so with rising costs and uh uh associated expenses of the of this venture, it's made it increasingly difficult. Um to do some of the things that we'd like to do. Um but, you know, as you can see, we we've done. Um, I think pretty much everything we possibly can to try to stretch the dollar and make, you know, make an impact in the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So uh so Madam Mayor, counsel, and thank you, John, for for that update and and briefing on that. I think for me, uh I'm trying to figure out, you know, as as we invest in downtown and hopefully the next three or four months, we'll have our. Amphitheater built and folks coming in that we try to incorporate those parking lots, those city parking lots. I know that part of the master plan, we identify both private and public parking lots, but. The particular public parking lots, like the one next to the post office or the one right here on Enio and uh. M Street or, excuse me, uh uh K Street on the corner, that are city uh parking lots that we could. Do a little investment in terms of we may need lighting, especially if there's concerts at night that are going to take place. Or just a fresh coat of paint to try to restripe and make sure people know where they can park. So I think that was one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this up in that conversation. You know, my goal is not to uh to reduce any of the funding that. Uh that uh the uh downtown association does. I mean, I think they do great work. I appreciate Mr. Harold serving on their board and being. There uh on our behalf. And so I just wanted to kind of bring up that, you know, I think for me, as people are going to come downtown, look for places to park. That the existing sitting parking lots, we try to at least give them a nice sort of upkeep, make sure we check to see if they're. See of their lights, if there are going to be concerts at night and so forth. So. So that was one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this particular item up and and also get a ba- I get an update on the collection of the assessments. And uh just some verification on the fact that uh the assessments that come from. From that are uh used for a different variety of of reasons, as as John Harmon stated.
Thank you so much.
Uh well, I make the motion, but I also uh just the last question uh to to Mark, our city manager. Uh I guess I, you alluded that there would be more conversations about this in the in the future. In regards to to downtown and some of the assessments.
Yes.
Through a report that.
Ye- yes.
Consultants are doing.
Well, the, yeah, the city council hired or authorized the hiring of a consultant and be us to help us create the new district. We're maybe halfway through that process now, so um I I don't know exactly the month, but you know, before the end of this year, we will be coming back to you. With, you know, update on all of those efforts. That that's as it pertains to the assessments. Now, in terms of the things you just talked about. A map showing parking, cleaning up the parking, lots of those things. That's, that's a new item, so we'll, we'll talk about that as staff and report back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh then, Madam Mayor, if there's no other questions, then I move that we adopt uh item thirteen point seven on the consent calendar.
All those in, oh, a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes five to zero. Okay, thirteen point eight was also pulled.
It's the, oh, sorry, international. Yes, sorry about that. Uh this one, I um, as you know, it's an, it's an item to recognize the work that. That lots of folks have done, uh especially thanking our our congress members, our congressman for his support. For this community project, the four million dollar grant that we're getting that's going to help with the um funding of the Agri Center uh. It's way extension. And so uh when I talked to Mark, obviously, I understand this is specifically for the grant itself, but I I had. A little broader conversation with Mark about the cost and uh what I understand. And I don't believe it's come to council for any formal formality, but the fact that uh the cost would be split three ways. Between the city, the ag center, and I believe a private, there's a private uh.
Furia family.
Family or private uh private source, that the the cost would be split three ways. And as far as I understand, uh from talking to Mark, this is about a ten and a half, eleven million dollar project. And and at that, at this point, um this this money that's being brought in will incre- will. From what I'm understanding right now, everybody is committed to two and a half million, right? So two and a half million from the city, two and a half million from the Furia family. Two and a half million from the ag center for a total of six and a half million. And then this would add. But or seven and a half?
Yeah, two and a half, two and a half is five.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm thinking six point five, but yeah, seven and a half and that the four million would be the balance. And so the question I brought up. And I know this isn't the uh the appropriate place to decide, and I'm hoping that it comes in the future. Where we do a more of a formality, I just the add, the math didn't add up for me in regards to a three-way split. If this is going to be an eleven million dollar project, the math is a little different and I think what. And I appreciate that we bring in the four million because it, for this project, but that should be able to free up the two and a half million that we had committed. Because the four million is more than a third on our end uh to maybe to do other projects. I know we've been trying to figure out to Sori, how to finish up to Sori. And those other bunch of other projects that could definitely benefit from about the two and a half million dollars. So. I just wanted to bring that up and hopefully the staff will bring that agreement uh in the future, but that. The fairness issue to be a third, a third and a third.
I think tonight, our our recommendation to is to accept the grant.
I made that clear.
Yeah, and that the four million dollars was a gift for this project. I I I I think we can talk about it later, but I don't see it the same way you do. So we'll just um, we'll look at accepting this in terms of we're we're actually going to accept the four million dollars. That's the important thing for us to do.
And just for clarification sake, Mi- Michael, I think his figure is not accurate as it relates to what the projection is for this project. That to begin with. And I agree with the mayor that what's before us is accepting this. And uh we have negotiations ongoing as it relates to the three parties, so that's somewhat delicate. And uh to try to negotiate, uh we've urged the International Agro Center Board not to negotiate in public. Uh, we, that's not healthy for us to do it until we finally have something agreed by all parties that can be brought back to the council. For accepting or rejecting. What kind of figures are tentatively we looking at here, uh, Michael?
Well, I think as Mark indicated, I believe the number was around eleven, but that that's a total figure. It takes into account the design that's already, work's already been completed. It's all the soft costs. It's really too soon at this point until the design is finished up and we get a a final engineer's estimate, then we'll kind of have. A better idea of what the engineer thinks it's going to cost.
I thought I saw a figure of eight and that thirty percent on top of that got it to that eleven, somewhere along that line.
Yeah, yeah, that was just kind of the thirty percent factor of safety, but like I say, it's still preliminary at this point until we have a a final design. Um, the best we can do is an estimate.
Yeah.
And and just for the record, I'm not negotiating. I'm just asking question in terms of what I've, what what's been publicly noted. I'm not, I'm not part of any negotiation process. Uh I'm just anticipating what that looks like. Uh but I've been told that the idea would be split into thirds. And then I got those figures that I just laid out about ten and a half million, eleven million from our city manager. From my conversation with them yesterday, so I'm not making those numbers up. So I just wanted to say that.
Didn't imply you were.
No, and I think just it's important what, since uh Councilman Madera sits on on that board and has worked tirelessly with these three entities. That we just recognize the delicate nature of of this going forward because we've made amazing progress with this project. So I will um move that we accept, uh we authorize the city manager or designate to accept a grant. In the amount of four million dollars from the Community Project Funding Congressionally Direct Directed Spending. Component of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four Highway Infrastructure Program. Authorizing the city manager or designate to execute all necessary documents for allocation of grant funds. And appropriating grant funds to City Project E N zero zero nine seven International Agro Center Way Extension.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Passes five to zero. Okay, I think that finishes the consent calendar.
About that, we moved real quick.
Yeah. Okay, so we will move on to uh to, I believe, general business, that next, yep. So we'll move on to general business. Comments related to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker. For a maximum of thirty minutes per item unless otherwise extended by the council. So we'll start with fourteen point one Transit Representative Nomination to T CAG Board. We'll turn, I turn that over to um our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, you recall at the previous meeting, a similar item came to you for recommendations on candidates to serve. As the T CAG representative. The, there were, of all the cities, there were two names that were introduced. Uh one was. Uh Councilmember Liz Nguyen from Visalia and the other was Councilmember Jose Sagala from the city of Teleri. Because there's two names, uh it would need to come back to each of the cities for a vote on those names, whichever. Individual received the most nominations would be forwarded from the Council of Cities as the primary representative. If there was a tie, then the Council of Cities would be the tie-breaking decision.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this public for public comment. Is there anyone in the council chamber that wants to make comments on this item? If not, I will close public comment and council members, questions?
So, Madam Mayor, um I appreciate the uh support that the council had or the. Council had last meeting to um support me in being the nominee for this position. You know, this position is a very important position for all of the transit riders in the county because it does represent transit riders uh and. The way it's set up, it's not necessarily set up for someone from the public who depends on transit to provide that important voice. It's set up for a council member. So in this case, myself and Councilmember Nguyen are interested in this position. So. Um, that 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 said, uh we're hoping that we have someone that can be a strong advocate. For uh for the uh transit riders that depend on on public transit every single day to get to work, to school and to healthcare and so forth. And taking a look at some of the things that that um are required. And kind of having an honest assessment of of my time, um you know, I I've. You know, got a lot of things going on, not only with the council and and with work and and my role as a chair of the transit agency for the county. That um while I do appreciate the support of my colleagues, uh taking a closer look, I think it might be uh. Beneficial to make sure that someone has the time and the commitment. Uh T CAG uh uh operates. Uh uh there are meetings during the day, which might make it difficult for folks to attend, especially folks that work. But I know that the board members that are there are committed and make it work. And so with that in mind, what I like to do is um. Would draw my name as a nominee to sit on this transit board. And I would like for the city council to uh support a council member Nguyen. Uh and from the city of Visalia with the hope that she will be a strong voice for transit riders on T CAG. And so that would be my motion that uh that we support Councilmember Nguyen from Visalia.
Thank you. And I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? It passes five to zero. Thank you, uh Councilman Sagala, for your thoughtful consideration. Your time constraints.
He's also running for reelection and we wish him well.
Yes, for sure. Okay, so we'll move on to fourteen point two, an update on six-cycle multi-jurisdictional housing element. Um, Mr. Naya?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I will try not to put everyone asleep and make this uh informative, but uh. Concise to the best of my ability.
You're not starting off already.
Public speaking is probably something I got to work on then, but um. The, I'm excited to share that the housing element, which has been a lot of work, um as we're pointing with the PowerPoint presentation. By all the cities in the county led by T CAG and and the consultant on the project. Uh minus the city of Visalia and the county, which have adopted their own separate uh documents. Is uh about to be released for public review this Thursday, so a couple of days from now. And that, the intent of the presentation this evening, I gave a a presentation overall on the general, I'm sorry, on the housing element. And that, the intent of the presentation this evening, I gave a, a presentation overall on the general, I'm sorry, on the housing element just a little over a year ago, uh, to the council. And so this is going to pick up from that presentation, talk about the work to date and kind of where we are in the process and where we go from here. And really to try to promote the fact that the, um, the document itself is out for public review starting Thursday. So, let's see here. There we go. Um, so the draft housing element update, it's a, it's a review of the housing element. Back, this is a, a few of the talking points for the presentation this evening. So we're going to review the housing element background and timeline, public outreach that's been conducted to date, housing needs, housing opportunity sites and what that means. Talk about goals, policies and programs that are found in the document and how to comment on the dra- draft housing element. And so the document itself, the city's portion alone is about north of three hundred pages and, uh, including the regional components, about six hundred. So there's a few slides, uh, I'm, I'm gonna hit only the highlights, but there will be an opportunity to ask questions at the end. And, uh, this is hopefully an encouragement to, to look into the document, um, and certainly encourage our, our constituents, your constituents and our, um, residents in our city to, to take an interest in, in the housing element that's available for review. So, um, these are some of the refreshers from last time. I provided a presentation to council. As a reminder, the housing element is one of eight mandatory elements in the city's general plan. The housing element must be certified by the Department of, of Housing and Community Development. That's at the state level. Compliance with state law protects the city from litigation and maintains eligibility for state housing and grant funds. Um, that's one of the reasons we must update the housing element every eight years. And it covers the period, the pla- the planning period. So you, you see it's already started December twenty twenty-three to December twenty thirty-one. And it just goes off of the end period of our, our last fifth cycle housing home. This is what we call the sixth cycle. And what does the housing element cover? So, um, it starts with a lot of, uh, demographics in the community profile, uh, housing stock characteristics. Uh, maybe it's my background in planning, but I, I find that very informative. Um, you'll see a lot of maps that are included in the document and graphs and tables. I have a few of those just to, to highlight this evening, but it kind of lays out, you know, what, what, what does Tulare look like? From all the different demographic markers, a lot of its census data. And so it's kind of our existing conditions, if you will, of our community. And then what are the housing constraints? It looks at market constraints to housing production, governmental constraints, and that mostly has to do with, everything from our permitting processes to our, our zoning or developing code, environmental constraints, which we don't, fortunately, we don't have too many here. You tend to see those in cities that are kind of in, uh, hilly wildfire zones or flood-prone areas. Housing resources, what resources are available to the city, um, to meet the, uh, future housing needs as our city continues to grow, including preserving our existing housing supply. And then the, the plan for our community. So what are the objectives and programs that address these housing needs that have been identified and what resources are available to the city? So here's a, a, a timeline and schedule, and it's actually, from here, it's a little hard to read, I guess I'll look at this one. But essentially, uh, when, when I presented this last year, it's the top bar there, the blue, the city council study session that we had back in March of twenty twenty-three. And we've had, since then, we had an online survey that, that kicked off after that study session, a community workshop that was he- held here in May of twenty twenty-three. There's been focus group, uh, um, interviews that, that have been, that have occurred. And so now we're at the, if you look at the second star on the top line, where we're about to release the draft housing element. And you'll notice in, in the green, so the middle, middle bar there, that shows that there's a thirty-day public review period. So the draft will be available from June sixth through July seventh for public review. The orange bars indicate the two periods where state H C D has an opportunity to review that document and provide their comments. And so the first one's a ninety-day review, uh, which you'll see there will occur starting this summer, going into the fall. Um, there's also a secret document that will accompany that, that will be working on this fall. And there'll be public hearings, um, after we receive input from the state to formally adopt that document that'll occur end of twenty twenty-four, going into early twenty twenty-five. Um, which at that point, once the document has been adopted locally by this council, it's submitted again to state housing community and development to, uh, officially certify it. And, and that would conclude the process. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of steps. But I, I'm excited that we're at this milestone. It's been a lot of work that's gone on into this process by staff up to this point, as well as, um, feedback we've received from the community. So what kind of feedback have we received? Um, so there's public outreach and I've kind of incorporated, starting with, these are common themes we heard in all the jurisdictions that are participating, so countywide pretty much. A need that was identified for housing with three or more bedrooms, uh, was ranked as most needed in the region, followed by housing with one to two bedrooms. And I think this is kind of looking at the two different extremes. Most of the housing we tend to produce is, is right around the three-bedroom range. And so if you look at the percentages of our housing stock, we don't have too many new housing units produced that are one, two-bedroom, maybe even less, maybe studios, uh, for, for single individuals, um, as well as for large families. And, you know, things beyond three bedrooms. Uh, respondents from all jurisdictions also identified a need for supportive housing programs for individuals experiencing homelessness. And this is an issue that is, uh, top of mind, not just in Tulare, but in our region as a whole and our continuum of care as well, uh, region. And then respondents from all jurisdictions, kind of on the other end of the spectrum of that, did also express a need for more median income housing or market rate housing that is either higher-end housing, newer housing for non-low income, uh, families, to be able to keep those, those families in the region, uh, presumably to have a competitive, um, housing market uh, for that end of the, of the spectrum. And remember, the housing element looks at providing for the housing needs of our entire community across all the different demographic and income categories. And then these are, uh, concerns or needs that we heard specific to the city of Tulare. So Tulare survey respondents selected the quality and size of housing, affordability, and being close to work, shopping and services is the most important, excuse me, is the most important factors, um, when looking for housing. Overall, most respondents selected the cost of quality housing as the largest barrier to, to, to affording their, their desired housing choices. And respondents also noted that the cost of housing is too high in areas that do have good jobs and services, which is a barrier to affordable housing. The most urgent housing issues are affordability of desired housing, as I mentioned, the availability of that housing and homelessness was identified as a, as a top issue. The housing assistance programs most beneficial to Tulare residents who responded to the survey included, um, for residents with housing needs are rental assistance and housing choice vouchers that are distributed by the, uh, Housing Authority of Tulare County, homebuyer loan counseling services, uh, for first-time homebuyers and housing assistance for residents with special needs. Respondents also cited landlord and tenant mediation services as a beneficial program to assist with, with these housing needs. And so again, when assessing the housing needs, we look at our city in terms of where we've been, where we are and where we're, we're going and kind of picking up on some of those trends. And so I'm going to just mention a few highlights that capture a little bit of the demographic and housing needs, really based around the, the census. And if you look at the chart, this looks at the, the growth rate population, this is overall population from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. And you'll see that the, and it also looks at two thousand and two thousand and ten. So you'll see, just looking at the top there for Tulare, we had a thirty-four point seven percent growth rate from two thousand and twenty-ten. And, you know, little, you know, roughly around half that or so from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. And if you look at, uh, the county in California, they also saw a noticeable drop. But I think what's very telling here for, for our purposes, we're still growing at over three times the rate as the state overall. Um, and I'll get into a little bit of some of the dynamics of, of what that is. I don't think it's a surprise to most folks, um, but also substantially more than the county as a whole. So Tulare, as a city, we are, you know, I think we outpaced Visalia actually last year in, in new housing starts or new housing permits actually issued. But we're growing rapidly and our region as a whole is also growing faster than the state. I don't think that's a surprise. And some of that bears out in some of the other demographics. So one thing to note here is this is our tow- total housing units produced over time. Uh, so in two thousand, as I mentioned, our population had grown something like thirty, thirty-four percent or so, or, or fifty-four percent, I'm sorry. And you see kind of the production numbers there, the percent change. In twenty-ten, thirty-two point three percent, that tracks fairly closely with the thirty-four percent population growth. But then for a population growth of sixteen point some odd percent that I, I shared in the last table in our, in terms of our housing production over the last decade from twenty-ten, twenty-twenty, we're only showing three point five percent, which is, is very low, not, not nearly keeping up by any means uh, with, with growth in our housing. And so there's actually a section in the housing element where we address that. There's a number of issues that factor into that, the biggest one being the, the great recession. Um, a lot of projects went bankrupt, a lot of housing subdivisions were not completed. You know, uh, lending standards, uh, became stricter. So folks being able to qualify for a mortgage as a part of kind of the financial reforms that came out of that, uh, recession. Um, one important factor that we also call out that really reflects these numbers from twenty-ten, twenty-twenty, especially with subsidized or affordable housing, is the dissolution or, or the elimination of redevelopment agencies. Redevelopment agencies played a major role, especially in Tulare, the redevelopment agency, in producing subsidized housing and added, uh, s- some really quality projects to the city's overall inventory of, of affordable housing, which are still operating, uh, to this day. Uh, population by age group, I won't get too much into this, but one of the things that ties in with these trends I've been sharing is, uh, Tulare is a fairly young population compared to the county, but especially to California overall. Uh, we have a lower, um, percentage of seniors, uh, which you'll see kind of to the far right. Um, what's telling there is the school age, uh, population. So we're, we're twenty-five percent based on the last census, uh, just a little more than the county, but pretty similar. But quite a, quite a few percentage points more than the rest of California. And again, none of this is accidental. We are relatively speaking, the, the most affordable place or one of the most affordable places to live within the state. And, uh, the numbers and the population growth have, um, borne witness to that with folks moving from other areas, being able to actually afford to raise a family, um, you know, have kids, school-aged children. So it's all, it's all tied together and that plays into, okay, these are the needs of the community and tells us kind of what we should be looking at for the next eight years in terms of our housing policy and programs.
Mario, a quick question on that last slide?
Yes, sir.
Why doesn't the total population match up with our twenty-twenty census? It's about five thousand, oh, five thousand people left.
Yeah, so their census data, if you look at the bottom, this is actually referring to estimates based on the American Community Survey, five-year estimates. So those numbers don't always perfectly line up versus the, the ten-year, uh, survey that everyone takes with the census. So that's you, that's the reason, um, we're seeing it a little different in this table. Um, some of the metrics are not captured by the census or like the population by age group is captured, uh, with these five-year estimates. And so the sources is slightly different. Uh, median household income, again, just summarizes kind of what I shared a little bit. You see California on the far right, that's the median household income statewide. And you see Tulare County and the city of Tulare, you know, relatively, it's twenty-something odd thousand difference there, um, which can play a big factor in terms of, of the cost of living and why this area is growing rapidly, especially with, um, kind of younger population, school-aged children. So addressing the, the community's housing needs, um, gosh, this is a lot of text. I won't go through all of it, but just to capture some of the highlights, based on the input we received, based on the demographic projections that I shared, we, we identified this specifically is, is referring to some of the feedback that was received from the public. So one of the things that was brought up was the need for more housing options for both renters and buyers at all income levels. And so there's a number of, the, the housing element includes a number of housing programs that direct the city to take on, uh, various activities. So the first one talks about encouraging the production of ADUs as an affordable housing option. Um, and it gives various ways to do that. Um, you probably all heard the state is very active on this front, everything from the regulations. There are, there are limited, um, but there are some programs even for financing these types of projects. The key is, will they be used to develop, um, affordable housing, um, you know, and kind of more tourist-focused areas? They tend to be used as Airbnbs, but nonetheless, this is an area that it's an opportunity to provide additional housing supply. Um, there's a program to amend the zoning code. There's a number of things, uh, as, as your council knows, staff is also working on a comprehensive zoning code update. And a lot of the changes that are coming out of the housing element, I'd say quite a few of them are just because our house, our development code is old. And as state and federal laws have changed, we're making changes to, um, comply with those laws. Other aspects have more to do with making sure we're not, we don't have development standards that are seen, especially by the state, is overly burdensome for housing production. There's programs that, uh, will direct the city to look at a variety of different tools to expand affordable housing, especially, uh, direct the city to apply for grants on behalf of local nonprofits. Some of these things we are doing, it's just reiterating and, and focusing our efforts and tying them directly to the housing needs in the community. Last one's list of city-owned parcels that perhaps the city could work on with potential developers as funding is available to facilitate development. Here's another need identified, the need for fi- financial assistance for low-income families that rent and own. And so there are housing programs, uh, directing the city on each of those fronts. So on the rental side, uh, supporting the city's tenant-based rental assistance program, as well as increasing awareness of the, uh, housing authorities, housing choice voucher program, uh, which is, and my understanding and talking with our county folks recently is oversubscribed, um, there's a waiting list. Um, one of the things that I think as a region we're trying to work on is to lobby the federal government and HUD specifically to try to highlight the, the high need in our area for, for additional, uh, housing choice vouchers. And on the, um, ownership side, continue administering and expanding the city's first-time homebuyer program by pursuing additional funding sources to promote awareness of the program and work with households that qualify, to be able to assist home time, first-time homebuyers. The need for housing close to services and jobs, uh, is addressed by housing programs that direct the city to collaborate with organizations like the Chamber of Commerce, Tulare County E D C, the Workforce Investment Board to keep attracting businesses and jobs to the city. Uh, buried in all those demographics, there's, you'll see there's a sizable, uh, percentage of our residents that actually travel outside our city for employment and vice versa. We, we do have some folks that travel into the city for employment, but to the extent that we can keep attracting businesses and jobs, uh, to support where our residents live is beneficial. Directing the city to support development, especially affordable housing throughout the city and prioritizing areas that have existing infrastructure. Uh, many housing opportunity sites, we're pointing out in our housing element, have been identified that are close to transit, connect the bus routes that are operating throughout the city. Because the state is really looking and making sure that where we're identifying locations where housing could be developed, especially affordable housing, that there's infrastructure, that there's transit and mobility, um, ability for, for the residents to get to school, jobs, things of that sort. And the need for large families, which was brought up earlier, there's a housing program to facilitate affordable housing development by pursuing funds from state and federal, uh, sources, uh, that specifically target this special needs populations, including large households. And there are, there are some programs that, you know, give additional points to projects that, that provide those, those features. Um, one whole chapter actually of the housing element is, is this, this called, um, affirmatively furthering fair housing. And so that's a state law, there's a federal law as well. It requires housing elements to not only address fair housing issues, but to affirmatively further for housing by addressing issues of segregation based on race, ethnicity, income levels, disability and other characteristics that are protected by California Fair Housing Employment Act. You'll see some of the bullet points, some of the things that they're looking for. Essentially, the state has become much more proactive in making sure cities are not putting all of the affordable housing in, in one neighborhood or one part of, one part of the community, um, and not intentionally creating, intentionally or, even if it's unintentional, creating areas that are going to be concentrated areas of poverty versus concentrated areas of wealth and things of that sort. And that's where all those demographics, uh, that kind of highlight the existing conditions come into play to highlight what the existing conditions are, and then they compare those to the oppo- housing opportunity sites we identified. And you'll be glad to know when, when you see the map in the housing element, it's pretty spread out and we are not overly concentrating them in one area. Um, and we're identifying, you know, get into this here in the following slides. Um, you'll see the factors we'll cover as to what the state's looking for, for those sites. Reminder, um, we have something called the regional housing needs allocation. So this is, these are the targets that have been established for the city of Tulare. You'll see the other jurisdictions there, and it doesn't, the city doesn't build housing, so it's not. You know, when we present these annual reports of how many permits we issued. It's that for the housing element, in order for us to have a compliant housing element, we just have to provide enough land zoned at the appropriate densities. So that we can have developers pick up those properties and develop them to produce. The, this many units, it's an inventory, uh, if you will. And then it shows the percentage breakdown of the various income categories. And, excuse me, those all correlate to. What percentage they are of the area median income, from very low, just below thirty percent, low, moderate, above moderate. Um, above moderates, over eighty-one percent of the median income. And then the pie chart there kind of shows the the breakdown of those percentages. And so again, the goal of this housing element, there's a lot of information I covered, but when it comes to adequate sites. What the state means about adequate sites is that we have again, the minimum number of housing units. That are required to provide enough sites based on our zoning for the different categories I just shared, for low income, moderate, above moderate. Um, we can count planned projects, estimated ADUs. And what the state's going to be looking at is that the sites are selected based on frankly, their requirements, so that they meet the density standards. The state equates. Density with affordability. And so all of the sites under the low income, all the various low income categories. Have to be at a density of twenty units an acre and above. So that's, we're talking, you know, three, generally three-story apartment buildings. To, to be able to meet that density. Um, we do get credit if we receive deed restricted projects, even if they're not at that density. Uh, so it's, it's either or, you either have deed restricted, you could have both, you could have a deed restricted project that meets the density requirement. Uh, existing plans and strategies for corridor and area revitalization. So I, we, I had to work to provide with our consultant. A lot of narrative about the, where we're identifying these housing sites. All of the different things the city is doing, everything from neighborhood revitalization plans we have going on downtown and. Uh, CDBG projects going on throughout our community and the low mod areas, low moderate income areas. As well as developer and property owner interest that's been expressed to staff and projects that maybe are are in the pro- in the pipeline, if you will. Of being developed, as well as public input. So some of the sites are based on public input. Uh, that we had at the workshop that was held here back in May of last year. And finally, as you get through the doc- the long document, there's a chapter on the housing goals, policies and programs. So how do you take all that information of? You know, what does Tulare look like essentially from a demographic standpoint, growth projections? And what are the constraints? What are the needs that have been identified? And so then there's a series of goals, policies and programs that are developed. To actually implement the housing element. And so that's what you'll see in that chapter. Um, and these are some of the programs I highlighted, you know, Program Seven, for example, addresses this need and so on and so forth. Um, so in conclusion, the housing element will be available for public review starting this Thursday, June sixth. I will be working with city staff to make sure it gets on our uh, city social media, city website. Um, there's a. Actually a project website which you'll see up there. So we'll be directing folks if they can go directly to that link, they can submit comments directly through the project website. They can also email uh, or mail comments to me, and I will be gathering those and providing them so the consult will collect them all. Um, and that concludes my presentation. I don't know if there are any questions for council.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open this for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to make comments concerning this report? If not, I'll close with a comment and turn it over to council members, questions or comments.
Open the gate. I don't know where you got that picture, that incredibly awesome uh, housing project. I mean, look at that place, amazing. Wow, there's that three-story you were talking about, but twenty units an acre, but it sure seemed to work pretty good over there.
Oh, it looked like self-help enterprises.
If you have fair housing logos, and then that's a great project on West Street.
Definitely. Um, I had a couple of comments on, on this item. Um, I think uh, I've. Sort of talked in the past about trying to meet arena numbers and the limitations and sort of the constraints that we have. Obviously, as you mentioned, we're not builders, but I've seen in my. Twenty-five plus years of having worked in local government incentives to try to direct folks. And there's been a lot of changes in the legislature to try to. You know, depending on your perspective, to handcuff you, to push you along, or to restrict you. From housing, being, building housing, right, throughout this, throughout the, throughout the state. Some good legislation, some bad legislation. But I think one of the things that that I remember reading about that Sacramento was doing, and I'm not sure if they accomplished it. But they were looking to allow for housing to be building commercial properties. And so uh, is, I don't know if that's come to Tulare, any of the ideas. We have vacant, uh, we have the vacant Walgreens, we have the vacant uh, this, a vacant ninety-nine cent store soon to come. Has anyone ever come by and say, hey, we'd like to build some housing in that commercial property? Has that come to Tulare yet? Well, the concept.
Yeah, so, so tens, there was a, there was legislation passed to permit housing in commercial zones. However, there were all these carve-out, there was, as you can imagine in Sacramento, in order for it to pass, there had to be a deal made with the labor unions. That uh, uh, union labor and I believe might have even been prevailing wage. Had to be used in order to streamline the process to do so. Otherwise, cities can still require rez- zoning applications and things of that sort. Be that as it may, we have not had much interest for. Um, really, we have not had too many developers. We, we tend to have a lot of, as you know, single-family developers. Um, we've been in discussions with some multifamily developers, um, aside from, you know, folks like Self Help that that knows this area. But a lot of those projects tend to be focused in kind of the metro areas down south and to the north. One of the things we're doing with our zoning code update. Is we are gonna make it, we're gonna try to do the best we can through, through the regulatory tools we have. To streamline the ability for someone to bring forth a project. In fact, I've been talking to some brokers and potential developers about. Picking up a project site and and doing high-density residential and combining it with like retail commercial, for example. They're gonna have to look at the market conditions and all that, but essentially making sure that our code is not getting in the way of those projects moving forward. Um, so that's, that's kind of summary. I don't know if that answered your question or gives you some context.
No, certainly.
If I could add one other quick comment. So council, later this year, um, I foresee happening is we will probably recommend to you that we move forward with a consultant. To prepare a fiscal impact analysis, which kind of looks at all of the. The development-related costs in the city, all the maintenance-related costs, and. Kind of looks at how much the city subsidizing those things and what kind of, what kind of um, costs we're gonna have long-term. That will lead us then to do an impact fee update. As you know, you should update your impact fees about every five years or so. We have ten impact fees. We're proposing to probably do five. You know, somewhere between the end of this year and the end of next year, summer of next year, and then we'd probably do the next five after that. After we have a chance to work through those processes with, with the development community and get their perspectives on it. I bring all that up to tell you, that is also another place where we can talk about and look at the possibility of incentives for affordable housing. As you know, there's already many state. Legislature-driven incentives for bent density bonuses and those kinds of things, but. You will also have that opportunity when we bring you those impact fees to look at if you want to do some type of carve-outs related to affordable house.
So, so the, the other thing, and thank you for that, for those answers. The other thing is, uh, the develop, the, the developers, the husband and wife. Who came here a couple of council meetings ago, had some concerns about inspection and so forth. I think what caught my attention in their development. Was that they built a development not for homeownership, but for rental. My understanding is all the units, I think they have maybe about fifty units in there, they're not for sale, they're for rent. So I, I'm curious, I mean.
That's not for individual owners to buy to rent. It was one owner owning all of those units. To rent them all out.
Right, I mean, well, the concept.
Like an apartment complex.
Yeah, I mean, but they're single-family homes, so I thought that was sort of an interesting concept, so I mean.
With, with the uh, what do they call it, ADU?
In the back.
ADUs, yeah. And they were trying to, weren't they, Mark, trying to rent out to two different people in that city?
Yeah, it, it's um, I've not come across, it was funny, this. Josh and I, Mario are talking about it. In my entire career, I've never come across that exact scenario that we're seeing here. It, it represents an interesting approach. I, I have my concerns about the approach. Um. I hope it works for them and for the residents. I have some doubts, quite frankly, but we'll see. Uh. You know, these are hopefully smart people making good investment decisions and they have thought all this through, and so we will continue to support them in their efforts to the best of our ability, but. Time will tell.
No, yeah, and, and I, to me, that, you know, it, it reminds me that. May or may not work, but I think the idea that they did something like that was interesting to me, because I think one of the things that, that, and, and you have this particular. Uh, slide up, picture up, was when this got built, obviously got built on, off of West and Lima. Uh, yeah, uh, off across, that uh, when they came for some support, you know, some, some housing support funding from the city. The concept of trying to build renters equity. Uh, in terms of allowing people who rent to build equity to buy a home someday. And I think when you talked about. The slide where you had the renters kind of needs and the homeowners' needs, that kind of brought that up in my mind in terms of their. Being any grants, because you know, people can rent for twenty, thirty years and they never build equity. Right, like a, like a homeowner does, buys a house low and then hopefully the prices go up, or maybe they don't go up. Uh, but they build equity in their home. So I'm not sure if there's anything in the housing element that could sort of be as a goal. To kind of accomplish that. So for example, at Santa Fe Commons, there was a commitment from the leadership at Self Help Enterprises. That they would explore the possibility of this housing to be one of the first of its kind in Tulare County. That would allow those residents to build equity. In other words, if you rent there for ten years plus and you're a good tenant and you have no problems, no issues. That there could be some support towards a down payment of a future home and take those renters and make them homeowners. And so I wanted to ask to see if in the housing element, has there ever been any discussion towards moving in that direction? And if so, if there are any grants to kind of get that and maybe do some kind of pilot project in the city. Where folks who've been there for a long time. I mean, I had a friend in high school. Uh, her, her family lived in the same apartment for thirty years. And one day they were forced to move out and pretty much they didn't have nothing to show for it. I mean, they had, they paid off the landlord's house, pretty much. But they'd never built any equity. So I don't know if that's something that could be addressed in the, in the housing.
Yes, it's, it's addressed in, in various ways, but you have to remember the housing element is a, it's a planning level document. It's, it's. There's broad policies, goals and programs. It doesn't get that prescriptive per se. But there are a number of policies, um, if you look at the demographics, I mean, this is not a, it's not so. I shouldn't take it for granted, but I'm used to looking at tables like this my whole career. So it's not surprising, so those that are familiar with this is the, the cost burden. Uh, the lack of equity between, you know, rent, own, between ownership households and rental households. You know, that's, that's, that's a historic trend. So there are programs and there are policies in the housing element that address kind of the full spectrum. Everything from, and it all starts with, I mean, even with our unhoused residents and getting them into housing. And having subsidized, having rental subsidies. Because someone may have a job and they may be, you know, trying to get, get their life on track and yet. The market rate for a one-bedroom apartment is this, and this is how much they're earning. And so it's, it's covering kind of that, that get, trying to help folks. Be, become self-sufficient. That's one aspect on the rental side. There's also uh, programs and policies you'll see in there around financial literacy and outreach. And the city, city staff, housing and grant staff in particular, and planning staff partnering with nonprofits that we have in our area and throughout the state. To um, provide information on the various programs that are available for folks, everything from basic financial literacy to. I mean, the first-time homebuyer programs are huge. I, I have the opportunity to sign off on some of the reconveyance documents we had of some of those old redevelopment agency. Loans back in the day where there is a down payment assistance provided to a qualifying income, low income family. And they were able to purchase their first home through that. Um, and often these are, you know, zero-interest loans and. They've kind of gone the full spectrum until they raised a family, they're looking to move out, and now they have some equity built up. And they, you know, that's one, there's various tools. So it's a big toolbox and the housing element has specific, well, I should say specific. General programs that cover all these facets, but it leaves it. There are some targets, you'll see some targets, it's just so many households and the state will hold us to those, but in terms of something super prescript. Prescriptive, what you described is an idea that could be pursued with, as funding's available with interested nonprofits. And so I think there's, there's an opportunity to advance something like that. But the housing element again lays out the foundation, and then it's building those partnerships. To have programs like the one you described or others.
Just as a comment, uh, just from my personal experience, it's. You know, we always operate on the basis that everybody wants to buy a home, and yet I've seen many situations to where I just can't figure out why. Certain renters don't take that opportunity and have discovered that some of it is the flexibility of being able to be mobile. Um, not having to worry about property tax or repairs or anything of that nature. And those are personal decisions that individuals make, but I agree with Mr. Mr. Segala that. Generally speaking, the opportunity should be there as much as possible.
And then just the last item, I just wanted to share that, that transit models are going to be changing in terms of the future. I know that we try. To provide Rena-type locations for housing near fixed routes. But um, for example, I mean, I, I get, I had a chance to visit the, the equally great project in Farmersville. That uh, Self Help Enterprises has done over there. And the idea over there was they built a transit center in the location. For not a bus, but for the micro-transit. So in other words, you know, right now we're saying, hey, well, we gotta build the affordable housing on the corner of X and Y. Because there's a bus route that runs right by there. In the future, it's all gonna be probably almost on, on demand. In other words, you'll be able to call or download off your phone or ride to work or ride to the doctor. So. You know, being handcuffed by where fixed routes are gonna be in terms of saying, hey, we, this land should be dedicated for this type of housing. That's probably gonna continue to, that probably will change in the future as well. So I just wanted to note that, that's kind of the direction that. And Mark knows he's been involved with uh, transit lately, that that might be, that's the kind of the future we're going. And so just wanted to put that up. Because I know in the past, I don't know if some of the council members here have been here, but when you guys have recommended where to put the Rena housing. There's been a lot of uh, uproar from some community folks. And so I think, you know, looking at all parts of the city now. Where we're not restricted by a fixed route, maybe a way to go as well.
Okay, thank you, Mario. I want to thank you for that update. Appreciate that. It's very thorough.
There's, yeah, there's, there's just one, I think amongst the combination that we've been talking about, that the city of Tulare. Redevelopment Agency did a rent-to-own project as well over on uh, East Street. Um, and that was an award-winning uh, project for the city of Tulare. But if I, if I'm correct, and maybe if we could get an update on that, is that should be right around its fifteen-year period of. It was a fif- that I remember right, um, it was a fifteen-year rent-to-own, and then at the end of the fifteen-year. It gets at the partnership, the prop, the properties would be up for home ownership. So uh, perhaps if, if council could get an update on that. On that older redevelopment project, that, that would be great of what, what, what's taking place with that.
Absolutely. I can report back, um, we, we can look at what the, the statuses of the project, but you're absolutely right. Rent-to-own component, award-winning project, trophy's still in the office there, and a quality project still looks great today. Um. And so I'd be happy to work with staff to provide an update on where that's at. And those are the types of things, actually, there are programs in the housing element that look at. Looking at some of these affordability um, agreements that have been signed for various types of projects and properties and making sure that. Looking at when those, those kind of sunset, or we have one project, for example, within twelve years or so. The uh, through USDA, the affordability restrictions uh, are some setting on that. And so we're, we're trying to see how we can preserve. Some of that as funding's available and, and the like.
It was that the city had some, a really awesome progressive redevelopment agency board members that helped to make that happen.
So is that something that we can get uh, further information on? Thank you very much. So we'll move now to item fourteen point three, where Mr. Isherwood is so excited to get to. The Preliminary Budget and Strategic Plan. So we'll first hear from, um, are you doing this, Mark?
Yep, so I'll start us off, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Roberts here, sexo, second, if Melissa could pull up the strategic plan. Great. Thank you. And I'll just ask you to advance if that's okay. So the first slide, you know, everything you're going to see in this, anything that's yellow. Has changed, right? So not, not a lot has changed, but obviously the dates have changed. Next slide. There we go. Nothing on this slide has changed. Next slide. All we did is add the updates that we had a strategic planning session, you know, and earlier this year. And we've modified the plan based on your comments. Next slide. So this is the first real area of change, which is you're asking to get a better sense and this, it'll get better than this. This isn't great. But you asked for a little sense of kind of where things were at, uh, on some of the projects. And so, you know, you see comments that are like underway, completed, you've got some that have dates. And the reason for that is, uh, some of them are ongoing, like the first one, Arpa consultant, that's going to keep going until we close out Arpa probably. In twenty twenty six is my guess. Uh, marketing gets underway, right? It's not necessarily like a project where we're building a road, you know, each one is very different. So marketing is really, we're starting with the logo process. That'll wrap up here in another couple of months. And then that'll dovetail right into the marketing effort. That'll take us several months, probably through the balance of this year, maybe a little beyond that. So I, I don't have next exact dates on all of these things. So that's why we put. Some of it's more like underway, you know, it's yet to be determined. We should know, Paul, we don't control that, right? And so I could put the date that they've told us, but we can't hold them to it. So I didn't necessarily feel like necessary to do that. Okay. Next slide. So these are some of the projects that are more specific construction related projects. We put the total cost of those projects and that's the all in numbers. Um, right? So sometimes we've shown you before, just the cost of the construction. Sometimes we show you all in like, hey, this is what it's going to cost to design it, to build it, to do all the soft costs, like have soil testings and. You know, labor contracts and, you know, kinds of stuff. So this is intended to be the total cost. You asked for an idea of what are we going to be finished with by, let's say the end of this coming fiscal year. So six thirty twenty five. So this tells you, for example, the first one. Well, forty three is under construction currently. That's what the total cost is. We expect it to be one hundred percent completed by the end of this coming fiscal year. And that gives you a sense of all the bounds of the projects. Now, what I want to tell you though is. In the budget that Mark's going to present to you, we don't have all the capital, all the CIP projects in that budget yet. That's okay, because remember when we do the CIP projects, we do it on a. Sort of in a two year, we, we look at a two year schedule or two year period of time. And we try to project a total of five years. Really every year you adopt the, the budget itself, you're really only adopting the CIPs for that year. And so this is by and large, the projects that we see ourselves that are more like formal CIP projects. Whereas that earlier slide might show things like planning studies or marketing. That's not a CIP project. These are more of the, the capital CIP projects. Uh, I can't guarantee you that we're going to hit all these dates. There's all kinds of things that happen. I mean, for example, the projects that are in the design right now. You know, we might find out when it comes time to go out to bid it that, you know, we didn't get enough gas tax revenue and so we, we can't afford to bid it yet. Or we might bid the project, we find out, boy, it's costing us twice as much as we thought. We can't afford to do the project. So there's a lot of variables here I want you to keep in mind. So. By and large, we think most of these projects are covered in the budget. Um. We have some of the projects covered in the budget. I can't tell you that we have all of next year, I'm sorry. All of the two year period for the CIP projects covered in the budget. Mark, um, I hope you can appreciate that when we get a new CFO. Even though he has all of his staff or she have all their staff. And, you know, we have a number of other staff that are outside of finance that constantly works in a CIP like. Like, oh, you know, uh, Michael and Tricia, Jason Bowling and others. Mark Roberts has to own the CIP by himself. He has to dig into all the numbers. That's the check and balance system. So even though he has all the numbers from staff saying, here's where they are and here's what we think we have. Mark's got to reinvent all of that from scratch himself and go through it to make sure that from his perspective, all the numbers are adding up. He hasn't finished that effort yet, uh, in terms of knowing really for the next, you know, couple of years, what we're going to have. And so we're pretty confident that these other projects we're going to get done or, or be able to work on in fun. He will come back to you. We will come back to you probably. I mean, I don't think he's going to have it done by June, uh, eighteenth. When we adopt the budget to be able to adopt all of the two year CIP projects. But we're confident we have the monies now to be able to get these projects, the, the, the one year CIP projects done. We'll come back sometime after the budget for kind of like a mid-year update on the CIP. And then, uh, next year, when you adopt the budget, you'll be adopting that two year lookout. Next year is the second year of the CIP. That's when you actually adopted two years. So I wanted you to understand that. Next slide. And then, you know, nothing changed here. We did a SWOT analysis. This just stays because it's, it's important to remember some of our strengths and weaknesses. Next slide. Same thing with opportunities and threats. Next slide. And then these were some of the additional work plan items. These are ones that are more, uh, again, not necessarily, some of them are CIP related. Some of them come out of the master plans that have been adopted. Some of them are council initiatives. Some of our more like planning initiatives. So as an example, labor negotiations. We've had that in here because, um, really it was a big deal to try to get the police labor, labor negotiation and fire done this year. Um, we are very, we're working very hard now on the general employees. And so I've written that as completed because I have confidence we're going to be able to get the general employees done. And that'll carry us through. We're actually working to try to get a longer term contract with the general employees. Woman's Clubhouse is not a project that council has officially adopted to say, hey, we're going to fund it. It is an initiative council has say, okay, let's work on it. Let's look at it. Let's think about it. So we're putting staff energy and time into it. Uh, there's a little bit of money going into it. We're going to come back to you in the future with a proposal that says, hey, here's what we think could be done. Are you interested in pursuing this project? Here's how it would work. Here's the expectations of others, you know, private sector. The nonprofit sector and how they would participate in it. Example Nielsen's, you know, those projects were, okay, let's find a way to get Nielsen's renovated or get Nielsen's demolished. And that took care of itself. Um, I will come back to you in the future to talk about civic affairs. As you know, in the downtown master plan that you adopted, it shows a potential larger scale project that would encompass both of those sites. And so we're, 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 we're working on that project and we'll bring that back to you in the future. So those are just examples. Corporation Yard, for example, that's not one that's, we're necessarily putting, we're necessarily putting money into it right now. But in the budget you're going to adopt is a fund that will help to cover the costs of us hiring a consultant to help us. Start that planning process. The same thing with the domestic treatment plant. So even though you're, and again, the enterprise funds are not really your specific purview. That's BPU. But there's dollars already have been set aside for years in the utility funds for the future planning of those facilities. We anticipate we will be tapping into those dollars this year to start the planning process for both of those, those two projects. Those won't probably come back to you. I don't think those will probably go to the BPU, right? So, so on and so forth, you know, the Lago streetscape, you know, we had the settlement. So that's underway. We're talking to the private developer to see if we can coordinate a deal with them where they actually get the project done and save us some money. So, you know, energy saving improvements, that's NG, that projects, you know. We, it's completed in a sense that we've entered into the contract and they're, they're working on a project. They will complete that project. Before six thirty, they might even complete it mostly by the end of this calendar year. They're working pretty good. You'll see that when we go on our tour, our tour really soon. Next slide, please. Oh, let's go back to that last slide. One last thing. The one other thing I added on bottom of this. At the, at the, at the strategic plan meeting, one of the things council asked about was. Cause I'm going to show you here in another couple of minutes, the bigger slide that shows the hundred and forty five billion dollars of improvements. Billion, remember we had the strategic plan, we, billion, yeah. And so, yeah, it's just be, it's gonna be good. Hundred fifty five billion, yes. One hundred forty five billion. Oh, one point four five? Yeah, one point four five.
That's a big difference.
You guys are paying attention. It's getting late. I know, right? Um, and so, uh, one of the things when we talked about that project is. We sort of talked about prioritizing those projects. You'll still see the prioritization in there. It's the same one staff came up before. If you want to remove it, we can when we get to that slide, but. One of the things we said at the strategic plan meeting was we need to do more work to kind of figure out. What are the dollars we're going to have to be able to do some of those projects, which will, especially in your timeframe, like this year, next year, the year after that. And so that you'll have a better ability to figure out, okay, given the dollars we have, is it time to move forward with any of those projects on that list? And so that's why I added at the bottom of here, determine bonding capacity for the next three to five years. I say it's underway only because we've developed an RFP. We're working to go out and, and hire a financial consultant. It's going to be able to help us do that kind of level analysis. Next slide. Yeah. Yeah.
When you say Delago streetscape?
Yeah, that's the same one.
That's the same.
That same project. Yeah. We've called it a lot of different things. Yeah. I mix it up to keep you guys on your toes, just like the hundred forty five billion. Excellent. Nothing changed here. Next slide. So again, some more just adding, you know, getting where we're at. Some of this is underway. Some of it's completed. Um, and I think you kind of have a sense of, of all of those. We've talked about most of those projects fairly recently. Next slide. Uh, this one I just highlighted local political will because last time we presented to you, we had a question mark on there, which was, I don't know if you guys have the political will to get stuff done. And the answer is resoundingly, yes, you do. In fact, you not only want to get it done, you want to get it done tomorrow. And so I eliminated the question mark. Next slide. Uh, nothing here to change. This is the big slide. This is the big one. It's like, that's a lot of money for a lot of stuff. Obviously none, none of that's going to happen. It, it's not intended to happen this current fiscal year. Some of it will start with planning and studying and those kinds of things. You know, if you're not comfortable with the current ranking, that was just staff's ranking. We can always eliminate the priority list, the, the right hand column. We can eliminate that for now until you're comfortable with, we come back with the financial information on these things. I just cut in pace what we did in January and stuck it in here. Uh, and you know, some of these projects we might not be able to move forward with. So for example. Um, you know, the business park, I mean, that's a, that doesn't come out of a master plan. That we're going to show you pretty soon, we're coming back with a study that we did at that interchange to look at the growth, the future growth of that interchange. Um, and this, that project dovetails nicely in with that study. But it may turn out to be, you know, I don't want, it's not a pipe dream, but it's one of those projects where. I, it will, it could pay huge dividends for the city if we were successful in making it happen, but it's very complex. It involves multiple parties, multiple property owners. It would require absolutely federal and state funding. And so it's something we work on and something we're interested in. It's just very interesting how these things can happen. Sometimes you could put a ton of work into something and you get no real benefit of it. Sometimes you have a great idea. You start kind of talking to people about it. All of a sudden it gains traction, momentum. You hit the right people and all of a sudden boom, somebody wants to give you, you know, fifty million bucks to make something happen. So that's why we keep a lot of balls in the air. We're running a lot, it's parallel paths at the same time in a lot of projects. To see what will land. I mean, in the last two and a half years, we were successful in obtaining nine and a half million dollars in earmarks. The city had never received any in the past. I'd say we probably did the same in special grants. And we just hired a grant administrator or grant, uh, firm that will help us with grants. So I think we're going to be able, I don't know if we're going to keep up the same pace on the earmarks, but on the grants, I think we will. Next slide. You've seen this, no changes here. Next, no changes there yet. No, nothing. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Now, on the council initiatives, remember these are not necessarily ones that council has kind of voted on as a whole. These are more individual. Now, some of the stuff council has said, yes, collectively, when we like, for example, the old library building, you guys have voted to demolish that building. We will bring that back to you with a proposed use for that site. But some of these are, just because it's on the individual list and council hasn't voted on it, doesn't mean we're not working on it. We will get to probably everything in time and I will eventually report out to you and say, hey. Remember that thing you talked about over here? We're working on it. Here's kind of where we're at. We think, if, if we think it makes sense and we could do it, do you want to spend some money on it? Here's what it's going to cost. Someone we might come back to you and go, yeah, it doesn't make any sense. We're not able to get that one done. So you are, you, you guys are hap, welcome to add to your list or strike your list or whatever you want to do. You can do it tonight. You can send it to me in an email. I won't be asking you to adopt this until the next council meeting. Next slide. Now, Patrick had mentioned that he wanted to change his list. So the only thing that I remember that he brought up at the strategic planning mission was working on the transportation corridors. And so I just kind of, um, grade out his old list, assuming, I don't know if he wants to keep it or not. So I just grade it out so he can see what those were, were. We can keep the old ones. We can get rid of them. We can add new ones. That's all I have for right now for Patrick. Next slide, we'll come back to it. For example, on, on Dennis's, he had completing the South Blackstone Avenue at K Street piece. We had a conversation with him and talked about why that doesn't really work anymore because of the new development plan over there and where the bridge comes down. And so I think he was of the agreement, yeah, that, that makes sense. That project's not going to be able to happen. And so we just struck that one out. Now, that's, that's not one we're pursuing for on Dennis's behalf anymore. Next slide. Uh, no changes here. Next slide. And Councilmember Segala, he during the meeting had added a number of comments, the citizen reward program, program for graffiti removal. Community garden, so on and so forth, a number of these different ones here. Um, I know when we get into the budget tonight, he, now you may have other ideas too, but he gave us a list of twelve items. He liked council to consider adding into the budget. I will tell you, my recommendation to you is going to be not to add them in the budget yet. If you want to do it, do it. But if not, put them in here. Because this is the place where we'll have the chance to actually go and investigate each one of those and go, okay. Does it make sense to do it this way? Sometimes an idea might be a really good idea. But the way that it's being recommended for funding isn't the best way. There's another way to get it funded. Where it has less of an impact to the organization, for example. Next slide. There you go. End of the strategic plan. Is there anything you want to go back over? Anything you'd like to change or add tonight? Or you just want to chew on it and get with me before the next council meeting?
Do you want?
Do you have any?
That comes next.
Do you have any comment on this? Um, I, I do, but I just quickly say is what I understood, especially with this and strategic plan. Cause you just went through the draft. We can email you because we're going to come back to this. So, um, I'll just do that with some of the changes, so forth and do the.
Great. Thank you.
Ditto.
Okay.
Anything, Councilman McDerrick, Segala?
Okay, then I'm going to turn it over to Mark Roberts and I might interject a little bit as he presents, so we'll see how it goes. Good luck, Mark.
Good luck.
We're all tired and it's late.
I saw Patrick's little post-it notes.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Mondell and, and mayor and council members. Happy to be before you to present the city's preliminary budget. Before I begin, as I always do, I want to thank, uh, finance staff and, uh, and the department heads. Uh, who have been, uh, whose assistance has been invaluable in putting together, um, the, uh, the preliminary budget that's before you. Uh, especially Assistant Director of Finance Melanie Gabori, uh, Michael Miller and, uh, and Tricia. Uh, Tricia Whitfield, uh, for their assistance and helping me get a handle on, on the very, uh, complicated, uh, CIP program. Before I begin, uh, I want to give you a heads up on a few things about this presentation. Uh, first, as you'll see, while the information in the presentation is the same as you've seen in the past. We've changed this, uh, format somewhat to improve its readability, its digestibility, if you will. Uh, second, I won't be reciting every number. In the interest of brevity, I'll only be hitting the highlights, the bottom lines, if you will. Uh, I believe you'll see the numbers largely speak for themselves, uh, and I, so I don't want to waste your time reading them unnecessarily. And finally, as you're likely accustomed to, I'll be rounding numbers. And in the case of added totals and differences, differences of a dollar or two are simply the result of addition of. Uh, or, uh, or addition of or subtraction between, um, cents that are included in the numbers, but which you don't see in the numbers. Uh, in addition, as I go through this evening's presentation, if you need clarification on something, please don't hesitate to stop me and ask for it. Uh, however, since the present, presentation will be somewhat lengthy, but not as lengthy as previous presentations. In the interest of time, uh, if you could simply jot down your questions and ask them at the end, it will allow me to get through the presentation as quickly as possible.
I don't think Mark understood, Mark, I, I don't think Mario understood. That was a joke. Mario is supposed to laugh during the joke.
Um, don't worry, mine's, mine's always the most boring presentation of the night, Mario. So, uh, so, uh. Uh, I guess I could have gone first and put him asleep. So you didn't get any questions. Um, anyway, so in, in any case, you may find a question, um, uh, you may find a question you have as answered in a slide that you haven't yet seen. So with that. Oops. May not be working. Okay. Let me try the backup one here. There we go. All right. In case you forgot who I am. Okay. So the totals, the city's total preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty five budgets, budget. Includes projected revenues of one hundred and sixty eight point eight million dollars. Transfers in from other funds of seven point eight million dollars. Estimated expenditures of one hundred and forty two point one million dollars and transfers out of seven point eight million dollars. Uh, typically transfers in would match transfers. Typically, transfers in would match transfers out because a transfers in, a transfer out somewhere is a transfer in elsewhere. But these totals include a, a small transfer from the general fund to the successor agency, which we don't reflect in the budget, so you don't see the transfer in amount. Preliminary, oh, I'm sorry. Preliminary general fund revenues are sixty one point four million dollars. A transfer is in or about fifty eight thousand dollars. Estimated appropriations are fifty six point two million dollars and transfers out of the general fund are four point eight million dollars. As a result, the preliminary budget reflects a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus currently, emphasis on currently. It's important for me to state this surplus should be considered preliminary, as in preliminary budget. Because until the proposed budget is presented for adoption, all totals should be considered fluid. We continue to adjust and refine totals, so the surplus could easily become a deficit before we return with the proposed budget in two weeks. I apologize for the somewhat small numbers here, but there's a lot of information. From fiscal year twenty twenty two through March of this fiscal year, Measure I revenues have exceeded Measure I expenditures by a total of three point one million dollars. Fiscal year twenty five expenditures of Measure I funds are currently anticipated to exceed its revenues by two hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. The balance of Measure I fund revenues over expenditures over time accrues to general fund fund balance or reserves. And staff recommends allowing the current and any future surpluses to be retained in fund balance and or reserves. Here you can see the history of fiscal year, history and fiscal year twenty five projection for the cannabis dispensary tax for Measure Y revenues. The nine hundred and twenty five thousand dollars is a slight improvement from the estimate that I gave you at the mid-year of nine hundred thousand dollars. As you may recall, council approved the establishment of three dispensaries and a tax ration rate of five percent on those dispensaries. Staff recommends maintaining the number of authorized dispensaries and the current tax rate. Okay, so there's a lot of information on this slide. As you can see, it's simply the, the salaries and benefits, the personnel and non-personnel expenses by department and the overall total for fiscal year twenty five. So again, it's a lot of information, so I'll just simply give you a few moments to absorb the information. And then I'll, I'll flip to the next slide and, and show you the, the second half and the bottom line numbers. Preliminary salary and benefits appropriations for fiscal year twenty five, a total thirty eight point four million dollars. Non-personnel appropriations are seventeen point eight million dollars, making the total preliminary budget fifty six point two million dollars. The preliminary budget includes twenty five hundred dollars for each council member for travel expenses and the same amount for community improvements at the council member's discretion. The next two slides and later CIP slides reflect information provided to the Board of Public Utilities on May thirtieth. Excuse me, preliminary fiscal year twenty five water enterprise appropriations total twelve point, oops, I'm sorry. Total twelve point nine million dollars. I'm in the right-hand column here, the bold numbers. Solid, solid waste, street sweeping enterprise appropriations, thirteen point three million dollars. And sewer and wastewater or wastewater appropriations, twenty six point nine million dollars. You may notice very small discrepancies between the totals in these slides and the table included in the staff report attachments. Those are simply due to refinements that have already begun on the accounts in those funds, but we're talking a few tens of thousands of dollars at most amongst obviously millions. Adding revenues and transfers to the appropriation totals on the previous slide. The water and solid waste slash street sweeping funds reflect deficits while the sewer, while the sewer fund reflects a surplus. Projected fiscal year twenty four available fund balances, ending fund balance are expected to be sufficient to accommodate the deficits. Although a negative fund balance in the water CIP fund requires further analysis to determine whether water fund balance will also be sufficient to eliminate it. Seven new requested positions are included in preliminary budget totals. Estimated costs of each position are of total compensation, meaning they include benefits and salaries. In the general fund, a senior level position is requested for the Department of Finance with an impact of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to, to the general fund. The remaining cost of about fifty thousand dollars will be allocated to one or more of the utility funds, the allotments of which are to be determined. Three police officer positions for which partial grant funding is expected are also included in the general fund with a total city match cost of estimated to be two hundred and forty thousand dollars. A senior civil engineer position estimated to cost approximately one fifty, one hundred and fifty two thousand dollars is requested in the Development Services Fund. A water development, water department cross connection specialist with a total cost of ninety four, estimated cost of ninety four thousand dollars is requested in the water fund. And a facilities maintenance technician at a total cost of approximately eighty one thousand dollars is requested in the property management fund. And there is a reorganization or reclassification of a position requested in the water fund as well. Changing a water quality specialist to a water treatment supervisor with a net cost of a, of approximately two thousand dollars. Possible requested vehicles are also included in the preliminary budget. General fund requests include two vehicles and a trailer for the Office of Safety, Code and Facilities. Nine police vehicles, which include two motorcycles. And two community services trucks for a total of six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in general fund costs for fleet replacement vehicles. Two sedans are requested under the Development Services Fund totaling sixty, approximately sixty thousand dollars. A light duty truck in the water fund at forty five thousand dollars and a side loader refuse truck of approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for solid waste residential, for residential solid waste. The total request for all funds are one point two million dollars. This is a somewhat of a significant decrease from the prior year, in part because you may recall a month or two ago, a request to bring forward to you for timing purposes of several police vehicles, which had been planned for fiscal year twenty five, but instead are, are being paid for in twenty twenty four. As with the earlier municipal utility slides, the next two slides reflect what was presented to the Board of Public Utilities last week. I should note, however, that it was presented to the board fiscal year twenty five costs of the new well and water storage tank and booster station projects reflected the overall project totals, while these numbers reflect just the first year totals. The new well is, is expected to be largely diffunded. That's the fourth item down in the water storage tank and booster station is at the bottom. Those projects are estimated currently to cost about three point one and seven point eight million dollars respectively. As the city manager somewhat alluded to, only, only a small amount of project related expenditures are currently included in the preliminary budget as we're working to analyze the results of fiscal operations of the current and prior year in order to determine financing sources available for projects. The analysis we completed thus far indicates the annual projects of the municipal utilities, municipal utilities and the, and the other projects can be added. And here is the list of sewer and wastewater fund projects. The cost of the domestic plant expansion project of the sewer enterprise fund had also reflected the overall project totals when it was presented to the BPU, which is approximately two, two million dollars. A good amount of work assessing potential financing sources as well as project priorities and capacity remains to be done. So while we hope to include all planned projects in the proposed budget, as the city manager said, when we deliver it to you on the eighteenth, it may be necessary to return to you in the first or second quarter of the fiscal year with a proposed project we are unable to include in the proposed and hopefully adopted budget. In any case, there will be no disruption of projects currently underway as existing funding for those projects will be carried forward to the next fiscal year as needed. Okay, so finally, other priorities that staff is looking at. Currently, the general fund reserve policy is that a reserve of twenty five percent of operating expenditures be held in reserve. The GFOWA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that general purpose governments, regardless of size, maintain a general fund fund balance of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues or regular general fund operating expenditures. Generally, the difference between those two is whichever one you think you can best estimate with a reasonable margin of error. Two months of expenditures works out to about sixteen point seven percent. So staff is recommending that the council change its, its reserve policy or that, or we will be bringing forward a recommendation, I apologize, which is expected to recommend that the general fund reserve be within a range of a minimum of sixteen percent to meet that two-month standard up to thirty three percent, which would be a four-month standard. The workers' compensation fund is currently overfunded. Previously, charges were allocated as rate-based payroll or salary and benefits expense, expenses, which has resulted in overcharges and a large surplus in the fund. We've changed that, that, the charges to transfers based upon actual estimated expenses resulting in, in about five hundred thousand dollars in reduction of, of annual charges. The employee welfare fund is also currently overfunded, over, overfunded. And staff is reviewing the use of excess funding and the decision-making process and authority in making the decisions for that fund. Finally, I'd also, I funny, before I go further and talk about the next steps, our next steps, I want to acknowledge the fact that workshops were not held this year. I think those are an important element of developing any budget, but new CFO, new guy defense that I often like to invoke came in where, what would normally be the middle of the process. We didn't have that luxury. But we will, we definitely will plan on doing that next year. In fact, I may even recommend expanding the workshops and maybe doing more, more outreach depending on staff resources that are, that are available to do so. Okay, so going forward, as I mentioned earlier, the staff will continue to adjust and refine the budget. There are a handful of negative fund balances. I believe we've reduced the number that were in the budget for the current year. The critical one is the general fund, which has, currently has a positive fund balance. A, is currently in a surplus and even if it has a small deficit or even a large deficit, which we certainly don't anticipate, we have more than enough fund balance and reserves to cover that and have a balanced budget. The others, there are some, we may not be able to resolve those before we adopt the budget, but it is a work in progress and something that I believe should be considered a priority. And so we will be looking at, taking care of those in, in the best way, in best and most expeditious way possible. Attacking the lowest hanging fruit first, those smaller amounts and seeing where there is viable sources or, or eligible sources from which, or with which we can offset those expenses. There's also, there will also be an addition of a safer grant for fire revenues and appropriations to add twelve firefighter positions over three years. The, some of the related costs and the city match has been included in the budget for that. I believe it's a few hundred thousand dollars overall. But the grant revenue and appropriations have not yet been, we, we didn't have time to put together. We got it somewhat late and the information somewhat late and we didn't have the opportunity to find an account to, to, to put it in. On June eighteenth, the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty five citywide budget and all ancillary and related documents are also, also planned. And on June twenty 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 four, at the Board of Public Utilities meeting, adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty five municipal utilities budget is planned. Going forward, as I, as I mentioned a few moments ago, we'll be looking at bringing forward, or we expect to bring forward a recommendation on the surplus of the employee welfare fund as, and the same for the workers' compensation fund. We'll be doing an analysis of CIP, the analysis of CIP that I mentioned. And I, we'll also be looking at the, at fund, the fund structure, in particular CIP and grant funds. The city currently has about, has more than sixty funds in which there is some, at least some activity. Everywhere I've been, I've seen there's at least some room to consolidate funds, so we, we are looking possibly reducing the number of funds. It's also possible, however, even though there may be an overall reduction in the number of funds, that we may add some new funds, in particular grant funds. I think because we have a separate body that, that is responsible for the municipal utilities, it makes sense to have a CIP associated with each one of those. But my, but in my experience, generally, one CIP fund does the trick. So we may, we're going to look to, we'll talk to our auditors about consolidating the CIPs into one, and if they're agreeable to that, we'll do that. And grant funds, this, we are not, we are not bad here. There are many cities who, every time they get a new finding, a new funding source like a grant, they create a new fund. When I started with City National City several years ago, there were a hundred funds. We got that down to below sixty within two years because there were just too many funds out there. So you can often consolidate grants by department, police, fire, engineering and or public works, and then another citywide grants fund. We will be talking to the auditors as well as the affected departments or potentially affected departments regarding to ensure that that is appropriate, that, that, that co-mingling funds is okay with under a, a department provided we do not, to provided we report and record things in such a way where we can track remaining funds that are available and there is no dipping into, into restricted funding sources. So with that, that concludes our presentation. Staff will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We are not bad. That's not ringing. Can you, I know you tried to clarify that a little bit, but are we at least fair to Midland?
Yes, yes, yeah, we are. Yeah, we're there. As I, as I was saying, National City had forty more funds than it ultimately needed. We probably could have trimmed it down more while I was there. I don't want to ballpark it, but I would say we're somewhere south of ten as far as potentially superfluous funds. So, no, not, not, not bad at all.
And Melissa, can you see to it that as soon as possible, we actually get this PowerPoint? Because I don't think we have it at this stage. Thank you.
We'll open this. Any questions from council? Oh, this is public. I will open public comment. That's okay. Is there anyone in council that, I mean, in chambers that wants to make any comments? If not, I will close public comment and open it to any comments, questions from council. Mr. Sagala, you look ready to go?
I'm ready to go. I spent hours and hours reading this budget and last budget, last year's budget. So I do appreciate the, the comments about the different formatting and the different information we've received. Obviously, since I've been on council, we've received everything from five hundred page budget detail, line by line, every single expense to this budget a little more outlined, as an outline. And so I think for me, I, I had a couple of questions on, on Measure I on that one slide. I kind of, I'm a little surprised to see that over the years, we have had surpluses in Measure I. Where I've been under the impression that we've had more spending on Measure I than we've had revenue. So that, to me, was pretty kind of, wow, okay, that, that makes sense. But I see that in this year where we have some deficit. But I believe, so one of the things that, that I wanted to double check was the streets. We've always done two hundred thousand for streets under Measure I. In this budget, we are fifty thousand short. Is that because we're trying to balance something in particular? In regards to the commitment that the council's made in the past? Because I didn't, excuse me, I didn't see that in, in the documents that were sent to us to review. I didn't, I couldn't find anywhere where Measure I streets money was being allocated.
And remember how I invoked the new guy defense a short time ago? I realized just a few days ago after we had already submitted it, that two hundred thousand dollars had consistently been budgeted. But when we were looking at the numbers, we were really just looking at the trend, so we did not see that. But it is, I, I do plan to up that back or increase that back to the two hundred thousand dollars. That is on the on the to do list as far as refinements and adjustments go, so we apologize for that, but it was a latent realization.
Can I just follow that? So if in I'm understanding this supplemental chart here, so preliminary fiscal year two thousand twenty five, if that were to happen, the one forty seven eight nine eight, that if that were to be up to two hundred thousand, is that therefore, I mean, if that were to be increased by the fifty three thousand or so, that would therefore up the deficit? So is it going to take from somewhere else to credit that to get it to two thousand?
Yes, yes, if you're talking about just Measure I for fiscal year twenty five, yes, it would increase the deficit just over three, three hundred thousand dollars. But as I've said over, as I said, over the past three years, there's actually a surplus of revenues over expenditures of about three million dollars.
So it just come out of fund balance?
Yeah, yeah, basically fund balance. Yeah, yes, definitely, specifically.
Right, so I I think, well, you've done with your question, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I think the only, the only, sorry, the only part that you did, the the part that no, 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 I wasn't going to ask it. It caught, the only part that in your statement, if you'd help me, is when you said there's three million dollars in it. But year to date fiscal twenty twenty four, I guess coming out of it, I I see it at one point eight. Am I mis?
Yes, yeah, yes, the definite, the surplus, year to date, the surplus of revenues over expenditures is one point nine eight. And I should point out, I I believe, yes.
So, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, but the balance of the fund is at three million.
Well, I I want to clarify that this goes back to twenty twenty two. I believe Measure I was, we we didn't have room to put every, go all the way back to inception, so it goes further than that. I do not believe, however, in the in the times that I've looked at Measure I, that we would have a long term negative fund, a negative fund balance aspect to that, but this is just the past three years.
Okay, right. I I guess, which is begging, the question is, if I'm understanding right, if there were a trial balance right now, what would be the that the total balance sitting in Measure I?
Yeah, well, I can bring that back to you, but the the Measure I fund balance is incorporated in the overall general fund balance, and it's not called out specifically. So I would have to go back historically to the inception of, to the year of inception of Measure I, add the revenues and expenditures, and we can certainly, that's that's not hard to do. We can get that information for you.
I'm not directing that. I just wanted to ask the question. I'll, that's up to the group and so forth and so on. But thank you. I just wanted to try and understand the balance that we're looking at is coming out of the fiscal year. This is what we have, what we're looking at right now, but it doesn't have since the inception of funds, and we don't have it isolated to provide that right here of what that balance of the fund is. So I'm correct, I'm good with that. That's what I asked. I'm I'm not taking it to the next step to direct doing something. Just thanks.
Right, and and I think what what I I understand that Measure I is general, general fund bound of fund monies. And but I know that we have worked or the staff has worked to delineate some of the Measure I expenditures. The the ones I don't see in here are code enforcement, you know. I know that code enforcement is funded by Measure I because when I did my my rudimentary math, you know, I saw that there was a one point three million dollar deficit in terms of what the documents we received and what we compared to last year. Because there aren't too many documents in our budget that show what twenty four, twenty, what twenty four was and what twenty five is to see the the difference. And so for me, I I think trying to understand what kind of money is available because, you know, I I once again, I'm submitting my my request to the council consideration, and I do refer some of the expenses that I'm proposing for the council to consider to come out of Measure I. So when I look at this chart, I'm like thinking, whoa, am I asking council to add to the deficit? You know, as as the vice mayor said, if we wanted to go up to two hundred thousand, that means now it's three hundred eighty, three hundred thirty thousand deficit. But then when you have three million that could be available or whatever that amount is, it doesn't look as bad. So in other words, when I'm proposing that Measure I fund is, could be there, but then it's part of the general fund that gets us to the four hundred fifty six thousand dollar deficit, I mean surplus, right? So it's kind of like, it's really there, but then it's not there. And so I think that's always been my frustration in the past, is kind of really understanding and and I think, you know, I always bring up Measure I. Where are we? Where are we? It funds amazing things. It funds our fire, it funds our police, you know, but yet a lot of the bulk of that goes there, but then if there's surplus, where can that go as well? So I think that's that's the bigger question I have, and I and I obviously not going to get solved tonight. But but I did have a a couple of questions in regards to the cannabis tax. So I I see that that the projection is that folks are, the cannabis companies or retailers are in full bloom now, but when they first started, we had about a three hundred thousand because the other ones were building and hadn't really got going. But now that they're in full production, I would say we're, you're estimating that to be about one point one million, correct?
For the next fiscal year, correct.
And and so from my understanding, right now, is all of that money designated for the homeless?
We we haven't come back to council yet with that, so when we come back to council, we don't have the exact date yet, but we think we're going to bid the project out here, hopefully in the next thirty, forty five days. Hopefully come to council, maybe sometime in September with a contract. We'll see. At that point in time is when we would say, okay, council, here's what it's going to cost to build it. Here's the sources of funding we would recommend you use to fund construction. And then we will also bring to you the operator agreement, hopefully at the same time, and we'll say, okay, here's what it's going to cost to operate, and here's the sources of funds to operate. That's when we would be recommending, you know, how we're we're going to recommend use Measure Y.
Right, because I I've been asking for some time for that conversation. What are we going to do with Measure Y? And I've been told that it's going to be in the budget. When the budget comes, that might be the adequate time to discuss it because the council hasn't taken any formal positions on what that money should be used for. Obviously, it has, it had the latitude when voters voted on it that it could be used similar to Measure I. And so for me, I that's to have an important conversation. I mean, I go back to, you know, one of the recommendations that that I put down was that, you know, we fund athletic scholarship programs for kids and 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 Jason could could maybe tell us that there are a lot of kids that use our sports programs, and there's a lot of families that can't afford to maybe pay for three or four kids to be in their sports programs. That's one of my ideas to get money from Measure I, I mean, Measure Y. And I use Mr. Maderos's brilliant, brilliant rationale from the last meeting where someone talked about the dog park, and he said, hey, there are four hundred homeless individuals. And according to the data that was presented earlier by Mario, there are about seventeen thousand kids under twenty, under eighteen or seventeen. So why shouldn't those kids, some of those kids benefit from Measure Y instead of it all going a hundred percent to the homeless? I mean, I'll use the same same logic from the last council meeting. So that's one of the reasons why, you know, I wanted to get an idea. We've never had that conversation as council. You know, again, one point one million and all of it going to the homeless, where we have thousands of kids that can maybe benefit or other types of things that can benefit from Measure Y. So I mean, that's why I wanted to clarify that 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 was the case, so that that was one of the concerns that I wanted to bring up. And and I think the last thing, I know there might be other questions, but I'll wait to the next round. But trying to get an understanding from the city manager or from from our finance director, what do you envision the process of participating in the budget? Because we're having the presentation today, we're asking questions, we may or may not get direct, you may or may not get direction, but then all of a sudden, June eighteenth, we got adopted. In the past, I know when I was a mayor, we started having budget meetings, and I, at the fire department, or I think Mr. Macedo was a mayor, we started having budget meetings in March. And then I know one year, the vice mayor and I participated as sort of a budget ad hoc committee where we started meeting way before to kind of look at the entire budget. You know, the details, I forgot, there's a term for me for the the sheets that have all the details. What was it? Yeah, flex sheets, yeah, which we didn't have this year or don't have this year. So I'm just trying to understand what the process would be moving forward in adopting the budget. We get the bite at the budget apple once a year because we often don't change or amend our budget throughout the year. We're always told, wait till the budget comes, wait till the budget comes. Well, the budget's here, and I'm trying to understand where we'll have the opportunity to present our case to my colleagues.
I'll let the city manager.
So council, I I hear you and I and I feel you. If in the perfect world, as Mark described earlier, his intent is to have a number of budget workshops. And in a perfect world, that's what we would have done with you. The challenge, unfortunately for us, is in the last two years, we've not been in the perfect world. We had, you know, our CFO a long time, many, many years retired, so she had her budget process, and it looked the same, I'm assuming, for many years. I I don't know. Then we had another CFO come in, and he came in sort of at the tail end in terms of trying to get the budget process to go. So we had a truncated budget process. Then he leaves, and we bring in a new CFO, and by the way, oh, we have a new auditor. So in the in the perfect world, my full intention, and this is probably the area that I'm most frustrated, not frustrated with staff, just frustrated with myself and frustrated about the circumstances. In the perfect world, we would have the ACF, which is the audit done, you know, in the December to February timeframe. I don't know if that's realistic anymore. All the auditors we talked to, they are, the audit process is getting pushed further and further out for every agency. But I still want to hold out hope that maybe next year we're going to be able to get, because we don't even have the audit done yet. We're working on it. But in the perfect world, we'd have the audit done in that December to February timeframe, because that audit gives us really good information that we would use in the budget process. And then in the budget process, that's one of the reasons why in this budget, we're including another position to help finance with the budget, is because we have to start the process sooner. We need to have time for you guys to review and have workshops to talk about. Now, the only saving grace in my mind that in the fact that we haven't been able to do that is, we have a jam packed budget already. The list of projects that you have approved, the list of things you've asked us to work on is monstrous. It is huge. The workload that we have in this budget and all the things that actually have dollars attached to it is the biggest budget in terms of the amount of things I've ever been involved with. I love it. It's great. We need to be pushing the envelope, and we need to be getting things done. It's been too many years in this community where there weren't things getting done. The reason I say that to you, though, is is because I know you want to add a bunch more stuff. I totally get it. There's not tons of room to add a ton of stuff. The opportunities to add to stuff is throughout the whole year. Throughout the whole year, Councilmember Sagala, at almost every council meeting, you bring up an idea of things you want us to work on and do, right? Most of those ideas, staff says, we'll work on it, and we come back. Almost all of those things have budget implications. When we have the strategic plan meeting in January, you bring ideas, so do the other council members. Hey, what about this? Let's work on it. We add it to the strategic plan, we start working on it. So we haven't had the budget process per se that I would, that I'm envisioning, that I'd like to have here, that we will have next year, if Mark and Melanie stick around, we're going to have this budget process, okay? But but we're, we are unfortunately not there, and it's really frustrating to me. So so I can promise you in the future, it will be better, but right now, that's why I say the list of twelve items you have. You know, if if council looked to me and said, Mr. Mondale, do you think this is a good idea? I said, I don't know. It sounds like a pretty good idea, but am I going to recommend it for the budget? I can't because I haven't had time to absorb it, and I don't know if the four hundred fifty five, the four hundred fifty thousand dollar surplus we have is real or not yet. I know the projects we have under design and construction are real, and those are ones you've already approved, and I got to make sure we could pay for those first. So I I would just say to you, if you could continue to be patient, I know it's frustrating. You give us everything you got. That's why I said, let's stick it in the strategic plan, and I promise you will work it. I can't, I I hope you see that everything you guys asked to do, us just to do, we actually work on those things. It just takes us a little time to get through all of those, especially if there are big dollars, or especially if there are things that we can, we can work together to get it done more effectively, more cost effective. So it just takes a little time to develop those concepts.
Well, I I do appreciate those comments, but I think for me, I I I don't disagree with city manager that some of these ideas need to work themselves out. But I've been on the council now almost eight years, and I rarely have seen where we adjust midstream our budget, at least for things that are brought up. I mean, things that are necessary, yes. We have in December, January, and midyear adjustment period. But not necessarily to say, hey, you know what, that idea that you had in May or in April or June, now is the time to vote on it and fund it. I go back to the fifty thousand dollars that are somewhere out there floating, that I've always wanted to put in the arts line budget, or create a line item for the arts and then put those fifty thousand dollars. We had a big conversation here, and and Josh was involved. I know that, and you know, the fifty thousand is somewhere out there, but we don't know where because we're going to talk about it during the budget process, and we're going to decide where that money goes. We're now in the budget process, and we're not necessarily sure how that's going to be decided. So so for me, the budget process is where we lay out those ideas. And again, hey, I mean, I think, you know, being lighthearted, Josh knows me as a guy who presents a bunch of budget items, and maybe I get one or two out of twenty things. But I do my best to try to, what I do, represent my constituents, represent communities that I think could benefit from the budget. This is a budget that is for everybody, right? And so that's the reason why I have these twelve ideas. Some of them may be crazy, some of them may not be feasible, but I did my best in doing my homework to say, hey, I want to, you know, to support this idea, and this is where I think the money should come from, because that's the budget process. We get one shot a year, one shot a year to do this. And now usually we get three or four months, now we're going to get two weeks to do it. So but let me finish more on that, and and I'll let you. So that's my only thing is that I appreciate that we can do the projects, but this is the time when we deal with the fiscal part of it, and it doesn't happen in February, doesn't happen in January, doesn't happen in December. Happens in May and June, so that's all I just wanted to say.
So for example, let's take the arts example you just gave. So last year, you said you wanted to have fifty thousand for the arts, and council ultimately decided, okay, let's put fifty. We don't know what that is. We don't know what specific project, but we think it's a good idea. It was in the budget last year. It's in the budget this year. It's not listed as a line item. Where it's listed is in the city manager's account. I have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar account for special projects. The fifty thousand dollars is in that account. Why is it sitting in there? Because we don't have an intended use for it yet. What did council approve? It approved Councilmember Harold and Councilmember Sagala to work with staff to figure out, what are we going to spend the fifty thousand on in the arts? Melissa reached out to the other day to say, let's schedule the first meeting to start sitting down and have that conversation. I don't know if we're going to spend that on murals, magazines, hiring artists to create. I have no idea what that is. The committee, I'm assuming, is going to figure that out and bring it back to council whenever, and I don't have a timeline that's really driven by you gentlemen. When that council, when we get to that place and we have that idea, we will bring it back to council. I'm assuming sometime between July first of this year and June thirtieth of next year. And you guys will say to council, okay, we figured it out. This is where we want to spend the fifty thousand or some portion of the fifty thousand on. And we, and council will say, Mark, do we have the money? I'll say, yep, it's in the city manager's professional service. I forget what the fund is. We got fifty thousand sitting there, let's do it, right? But that, that's how that gets added. Those are the ways we do those things, and it happens either throughout the year or it can happen right now. If you say you want to add all of your items to your list in the strategic plan, I promise you, we will work on those. I can't tell you those dollars are going to be available to you. We will come back in the budget year, just like that with the arts and say, hey, this is what Councilmember Sagala asked for. Are you guys ready to fund this thing? We do that throughout the entire year on many projects. We're going to be bringing back to you guys very soon the whole CCA concept. Like, there's many of those ideas you bring. It just takes us, we're going to bring back the public garden this time. We haven't identified exact dollars for that yet, but I can promise you when we do, if council wants to fund it, I will tell you how we can fund it.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to turn the time, some time over to Patrick. He also has gone item by item, and I think he has some things that he would like to share as well.
I appreciate that, I do. I appreciate that, and perhaps switching gear, but what kind of grabs me a little bit, and maybe if we go one by one, so what allows us to kind of go through some stuff easier is perhaps with Councilman Sagala, as you've mentioned, if if now, as you have it, and and what I understand kind of our process is, do you have questions, you have items, and kind of can kick those out? I don't know if right now we're just in question phase. Yeah, so if it's questions or if it's just going through your items, so I'd rather maybe a little bit, if the group agrees, is if you have questions and items, just go each one of us, so it gets it all out, and we can jot it, say yes or no, compared to going back, back and forth. I don't know.
What are we going to do? We're only going to go off the items that he's presented without consideration for anything?
No, that's what I'm saying. Do we just go down the line?
It's already ten o'clock fifteen.
Well, we almost need a special meeting to deal with these additional requests. I mean, when I looked at this list, you know, some of it's, you know, very good ideas, but for instance, what we have is we had at least, without the question marks, three hundred fifty thousand dollars of additional expenditures without any real investment in items. And for instance, I think there was one thing here that dealt with the museum and a cost of living increase. But if you look back at history, you mean, in about two But if you look back at history, you meet, in about two thousand eleven, was that when there was a budgetary? Crisis as it dealt with, with nine, twelve, somewhere in that vicinity. The chamber got, excuse me, twenty five thousand dollars and museum got twenty five thousand dollars. And because of the budgetary crisis that city government had, they cut them both in half. So in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, somewhere in that vicinity, they were cut to twelve thousand five hundred dollars each. Now the chamber, chamber, yeah, there. I thought they were stayed at twelve, five and we'd given them additional funds, but in any event, here we are, let's take the museum then, here we are. Thirteen years later. And the museum that had been cut from twenty five thousand down to twelve, five. Is, is now at twelve, five still. So I mean, if you figure what the cost of living has been. They're probably effectively in twelve, two thousand ten dollars, nine dollars, they were probably at uh. What? Eight thousand dollars, something like that. So I, I mean, those are the kinds of things that we have to discuss and how it fits within the budget. You know what I mean? And, and you know, Mike, we're taking some of the somewhat. Epitheter funds, which I think were already uh, going to be used for, factored in for other purpose. It's not like we just have excess funds. We've got some of these that are going to be. Designed to go towards some of the. Anticipated cost overrun that we're going to have in some of these construction projects. So all of that has to be analyzed. I'm not saying the ideas aren't good, but we have to factor it in with a budget that we have. And, and when we presented Measure Y to the community, the offset to that was. Uh, give us a chance to get the revenues from Measure Y and rest assured, we'll use those funds to deal with homeless issues. That was the presentation made. And you might want to comment on that, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's precisely what we told the public and um. Could have a great deal of uh, impact on why that Measure Y passed.
What I'm just saying is, it's ten fifteen at night. I have a series of questions that are probably at least a half hour plus. I guess what I was asking is, are we going to do all the debate or we just kind of go down the lines or everybody kind of says their two cents instead of going constantly back and forth? Um, I think to jump in there, it's, it's just late, but perhaps one is there's a series of decisions that are, as I understand. So I'll just throw mine out there, uh, Mayor. So um, a couple of questions that I have on decision items, what I understood in the presentation is actually in front of our decision is. There's a request of added positions. There's three police officers and there was four other additional positions. Which to my understanding, that is a discretion, which is before council. Um, there is also um, an item in there which doesn't have to be answered now, just throwing this out on question. So it is the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in new fleet. Um, so within the fleet enterprise and kind of what the balances of that fund is. That my unders, I understand what we have is a decision in front of us because of those expenditures in fleet that we could break out. Altogether, it had a fleet replacement of one point one six five million dollars. Um, and a question that I would have that go with that, of course, is that based off, is it using a fund balance? So a little of the questions that I'd like to come back to, doesn't have to be tonight, Mark, but. It's also understanding is how I see this budget presented is all the revenues are actually all income. That's not including current balance of the funds, that is revenue. So if it says um, gas tax fund, three point five million, that is revenue that's going to, to come in. If I'm understanding all, altogether.
Forgive me, I was coughing as you were saying what fund.
It was the, so I'm just saying as an example, general fund has sixty one million, that's revenue coming in. Gas tax fund, three point five million, that's revenue coming in. What it doesn't say, it's, it's not taking if the fund had a previous balance. It's just saying those are the revenues and then we have transfer ins, transfer outs and then you have expenditures. Um, and I have a series of questions with that, but I can email staff. The part I think jumping to a little bit and, and I, and I do, I just have to say, as I agree is. We don't have time where we spend to really kind of weed out amongst the five of us. I think as Councilman Sagala said, each of us, I imagine would have them is. Um, are there any other additional adjustments or decisions that want to be presented to the council? So I think with that, uh, I have always advocated and I believe in. Still is, instead of directing staff to specifically use money in this area to tell them how to book it. Um, I, I'm always, you've heard me preach the book of Job on, I don't endorse putting T accounts out and us telling how to. Do debits and credits to staff. Rather, we put out the items, do as five, agree as Mark said and so forth. Um, one of the things I think looking at the budget, those are the decision, I've already mentioned a few of the decision items too. I think another one then is, um, which was presented on Sagala's list, we talked about the arts. That in the strategic plan where I put that is perhaps in, in better as the city manager had said, strategic plan was looking at an arts consortium. That the city, much like the city of Icelia. I think another one coming up in strategic plan, I'm, I'm not putting these out for debate, I'm just saying this is what all you send to the city for strategic plan. Is also then, uh, what does that look like of a possible conversation of a youth commission for the future? Um, again, yay, nay, pro, con, I'm just saying some of those items. As was said here, was increased for budget line item for graffiti abatement. Um, the part with increase for graffiti abatement, the part with weed abatement. Is, I think my question would be, is there an element of, well, we're not meeting a need? So I, my, that would be my question is, if an increase, an increase to what? Is there some sort of gap in need? Or, or what does that look like if the city's going to do some analysis to that? Um, we had to create a new budget line item with Measure I for an allocation for sidewalk installation and improvement of a pilot program. Uh, I, I agree, I, I think some of those are strategic uh, plan items. Um, and another, I don't mean to present debate to you Sagala without you giving the chance. I'm just kind of saying, I think in looking some of your items, another budget item that I think coming back to look at. In some of the nitty gritty weeds is um, set aside for ten percent of Measure Y tax proceeds for city youth. That's a decision in front of us, I think is Measure Y, which I understand it is in front of us. We can have that debate if we, if we want to of that. But rather, again, I would say, do we want athletic sports scholarships? That's more, I think, the decision of perhaps a strategic plan for council to look at. And I propose one, which is, I think to help support. Uh, the need, that there's a need of supporting our youth organizations. There was the mention of the increase to baseball, youth baseball and to softball, I think as well to others is lighting. We've talked about that, but is there a way that can subsidize that for the community, which is at, at Cypress Park and others? It's providing free lighting. Now, by providing free lighting means there's a cost somewhere and what does that look like? But if you made a reservation at Cypress or if you made a reservation at Live Oak, can you get the lighting covered, you know, for free? Uh, with it. So it's, it's, baseball association has their costs with lights. And the reason, I mean, I'm putting that on the list for debate and we don't have much time to do that, we can come back throughout the budget is. Um, support what we have, when I know a lot of us, you know, were elected of new. And what I mean is, there's been an advocacy of more lighted facilities and we did some improvements, we had the park master plan. Um, I'm, my own view is, I don't put perhaps the regional sports complex at such a high list. My reason why is, granted, that's probably a ten year, fifteen year plan to work on. But we have some great resources right in front of us that we could augment to meet the same need. And I think we could make an investment, youth baseball and some of organizations that have their own private, a private partnership. And what does that look like to augment to meet some additional needs and support a great partnership in the community to help more youth get involved in sports?
Can I interject?
Yeah.
I think that's there. Am I correct? Because there's a fund, a diff fund that has to be spent. Is that accurate?
Well, to, yes, I mean, so, so, yes, we have about, for the easy discussion, seven and a half million dollars in park diff fees. We've already earmarked a lion's share of that uh, for some of the projects that are under construction now. Uh, there is still a balance there that will ultimately have to get programmed. That will come to you at some point for a discussion, because we're not ready, we're not ready to have the discussion, because we're, we're doing all these other projects. We'll get to that project at some point to say, okay, what do you want to do with the diffs, right? The remaining park diffs. So I, I don't disagree with everything. I understand everything you're saying.
He's done. I interjected.
I, I'm not, but I under, I understand why you, it makes total sense and Mark, feel free to continue, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think.
I'm not saying we have to do this, I'm just putting line items out there, because I think part what Sagala is saying.
Yeah.
And I know staff, you're all here, and I mean, man, you gotta sit here and listen to all this and stay home and maybe there's my editorial.
Thing I could tell you for me in terms of, not that you care about me, but.
No, I do.
But when you list the things you're talking about in the strategic plan under your sections, that's the best thing for you to do. Let me, let me give you an example. We're not the state of California, nor are we the federal government. Organizations approach them all the time and say, give me an earmark. I just want ten million dollars to go build whatever it is, right? That's not really what we are at the local government. We're not, we don't have the ability for people to come in and just start saying, I want these fifty different things. They may not tie into your strategic plan or your goals and we don't, you might have the funding, I don't care, just give me that money. It's not really how we work. The way, the way we work is, I'll give you a real simple one. Let's just take one off of Mr. Sagala's list. Create a new budget line item in Measure I expenditure budget with an allocation, a hundred thousand dollars for the maintenance upkeep of citywide bicycle lanes. That's very, very specific. That's what I want. I want it done this way and he has the prerogative to do that. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that. But if that was in his strategic plan, what I would do is go, okay, what is his goal? His goal is to have dollars used to try to do, upkeep of city, he, he wants to do a couple of things. He, he asked the other day at a council meeting, can we, can we put money into doing bike lanes in District One? We're going to come back to you with an analysis on that, okay? And now he's asking, can we also put money into upkeep of bike lanes, right? So I, I look at what he's trying to accomplish, not how he's trying to accomplish it. Because there may be a way I could come up with it where we can accomplish what he wants to do and it doesn't cost us a dollar, a dime, right? I can get somebody else to pay for it. That's why I need time to look at these. So you're going to get in, in this weekly report. Our response to Mr. Sagala's request about can we use dollars to do bike lanes? Of course, if council wants to do that, go for it. We think we have a better solution, which is, we're submitting a massive, it just co-happens to be, we're submitting a massive ATP grant. To look citywide at all the bike lanes and the creation of new bike lanes throughout the entire city. It's a two hundred thousand dollar submitter. Guess who's paying for it? TCAG. So we're doing all the work, TCAG's paying all the money for it and we're going to submit it to agencies and hope they're going to fund us doing the citywide. So it's better for me as your professional manager to hear what is you're trying to accomplish. Versus, I want to take ten dollars or a hundred thousand or ten million, just tell me where you want to go and let me work on it and we will get to it. It's going to be a much, because we have so little dollars, we have to stretch them as far as we passively can. I guarantee you, we'll get far more done if we use that approach. Then if we start picking off, we could do this, but if we start picking off all these dollars, we're going to run up with no money. We're going to have twelve things that are done and no money left to do all the other things that we're going to want to do. So we have to be, that's a gross, gross overgeneralization, but like, the, the point is trying, what I'm, the point I'm trying to make, well, you have about four hundred, you. Right here, this list covers all the surplus we have right now. And I don't know that we have that surplus.
I, I guess the part that I would say is, as Richie said, if you put it in the strategic plan. If we're just going to put anything we want on the strategic plan and you're going to do uh, an umbrella of research to all those things. I think part of the precedent we've had a bit is to also mitigate that, to approve that there's research towards it. I, I think to share with it and another, just um, I'll speak from my perspective of. Is we, we come here and we get into a lot of gritty about the transportation, about positions, what we're going to do for. We're going to do a lot of elements about government, but when it comes to social components of the community, suddenly it gets buried in. Off the chart or put it on this schedule. Now, I don't mean to be facetious, but the part which we don't have is that debate then of, much like we went through the women's club. Perhaps much of what we want to do with sports parks, that I, I also, I think is when we did have extra funds come in. And extra funds came to the city and I totally endorse that, is those funds need to be placed. And I think to the point is, we don't ever get to have the conversation again, until it comes back to budget, this is the time. And I, and I'm, then here we are again, where, okay, it's going to go this method. Now, I don't mean to be, I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm just trying to walk through the script and the script has been. That therefore, in order to do that, you have to take other steps, which is now I got to petition the mayor and do a form to get it, to approve it, to. To even talk about it, to then get it on the agenda, to get direction. And that's a part that I'm concerned about is, that's where the script of those elements go. So do we want it on the strategic plan that says, give me all the list, what I would endorse, I'm just. I'm not saying I'm absolutely right, council members, I'm just throwing this out there. Is if we pick all the items and we put it on the list, right, wrong or otherwise, and it's not vetted completely by us. Let our manager look at it and let the manager say, I can report back to you on these two or three items. We understood, I'm not coming back to you on all twenty, you can put fifty items if you want on there, but look, Mark, if I'm interpreting you right. Put those on there, okay? Now, as opportunities present themselves and we go through the budget. Nobody's saying that it's yes and nobody's saying it's no. Give it to the manager and let the manager look at it. So I, I endorse that, but I do think that there needs to kind of come to fruition a bit. Uh, some of those action items that are some of those goals that are important, but council does need to vet that out a bit. Um, and there are some of those micro spending, those key decision points. That I think that deal in my, my, Patrick Ishwood, I'm on editorial here. Is that we do need to do a lot for some time and I think what we have been is, we have been very conservative. Towards that process, we've been very protective of it. It, it can seem like a lot, but at the same time is. Is when, when are we going to have that? And if not, just do it on your list. And a lot of this, which are just questions, I think more mechanics, I can do the same, which is just take a lot of the comments that I have. Put it on the strategic plan list if that's how we're going to approach.
Yeah, for me, that would be the best way is the strategic plan and we can have as many meetings to talk about it as you want, but a couple of things I want to pick on. You are a hundred percent correct. The strategic plan currently is more project based than it is, let's say, initiatives, social programs, those kinds of things. That's not by design, that's probably by, you know, we had eighteen million dollars in ARPA funds, we've got a few projects, maybe it was driven by that, right? You guys can absolutely put in a strategic plan, social programs if you want, you could put all those things. What I will do, just so you know, is with the executive team, we will go through every one of your lists, every one of them, and we'll start looking for common themes. We have three council members that want to do something that affects youth. Okay, it's, it's a social program, affect you, what opportunities do we have? And Jason will raise his hand and say, well, the school district just happened to call me today and say, they got three million dollars, they got to spend, they need a program to do something for youth. Boom, let's go work on that one, right? Because it's, it's shared between three council members and we have the opportunity to strike. That's a better method for us to stretch our dollars. It doesn't mean it has to be that way. Counsel could, could say, we've now talked in a special workshop about the strategic plan. And we've decided we want to pick one from each of our lists and we've all voted on, you're going to focus on five projects or five initiatives or five programs, doesn't matter what it is. We've all voted on it and then I say, okay, you gave me those five, we're going to work on those five. That is the best method. That's a better approach in my mind, especially if we could tie it into other big initiatives we're working on, because opportunities will present themselves that we can capitalize on.
Right, and, and I do appreciate that, but I mean, if I were to go back to my conversation about the ag center extension, if we use that concept. We probably wouldn't have the money for it. I mean, if we said, hey, you know, it's going to cost eleven million dollars to extend agricultural center away. And uh, uh, put it on the list and we'll see if we can find the money, see if, uh, you know, the airport has a bunch of money or this has money. For me, the budget process and, and I've told this to, to folks. The sixty one million dollar project or general fund budget. Ninety nine point nine percent or ninety nine point five percent, but definitely a, a super majority of the money. Doesn't get changed. We take staff's perspective, their recommendations and we don't change everything. That minute hundred thousand, maybe half a million dollars is where the council can, can have these discussions. Where we can say, you know what? We like to direct some money towards that. We like to direct some money towards this. I think for me, my, my perspective is, I'd rather say, look, uh, the council decides that we are, as an example. Are going to set aside ten percent of Measure Y, right, which it ends up being. are gonna set aside ten percent of Measure Y, right, which it ends up being about a hundred and ten thousand dollars for youth programs. We haven't figured it out yet, maybe the strategic planning will do so. But if Jason comes back and says, hey, I found a hundred and ten thousand dollars somewhere from this or that, that frees up that hundred and ten thousand, just because we put it in the budget doesn't mean it gets spent the next day. It could be spent next May, it could be spent next June. It's a placeholder for us to say, hey, we're willing to commit to our kids. I'll take Mr. Maderos' argument, yes, homelessness is important, but not every single penny should go to them. We got thousands of kids that can benefit from some of this Measure Y money. So to me, that's the approach, that we set aside the money, if the money is found like they are with the International Ag Center. When we did the budget, we didn't think we'd get four million dollars, right, and we got them from the advocacy and all the work. So I think that's
Actually, that's how that project happened, just for the record.
Yeah.
The very first meeting I was here before you hired me as the city manager, I listened to the discussion about that road project, my wife and I were sitting in the audience. Council member Sagala said, I will not support using CDBG dollars. The other party said, we can think we can put it, put about two point five million dollars to it. That told me how we're gonna get the project funding, we're gonna have to go get an earmark. We got lucky, we got the earmark, but that's exactly how that project happened. We were the ones that submitted the project, because you guys said we wanna do the project, but we gotta figure out how to get the funding. So that's an example of how you get the things done, you, you give it to us, let us chew on it, and then we'll figure it out. I don't disagree, the other way is to do it exactly what you wanna do, I'm just saying, if you wanna go that route, that's fine. Just keep in mind, for example, if you say, we're gonna use Measure Y money, I don't know how else we're gonna fund a homeless shelter. Because the, the options for us for the hunt, to fund a homeless shelter are pretty much general fund dollars. We've got CDBG, general fund, PLHAP money, and Measure Y. Those are the options we have now. Unless we're gonna hope that we can go out and get other grant funding, that's not our dollars that we're gonna hope shows up. I'm not really great, I'm not really comfortable with the idea of signing a contract with an operator on the hope that we're gonna get a grant to pay for them. So that, that would be an example of, if you, you're saying, let's use Measure Y to help the kids, I'd rather you say, tell me what you wanna do for the kids, and let us figure out how we're gonna help them. I wouldn't recommend Measure Y.
Well, and you've, if you take the ARPA funds, I mean, I, I, I dedicated a huge amount of the money that I had specifically for youth programs, and others didn't. So I mean, that opportunity's been there, and to say, we need to help the kids, I mean, we've been doing that, so.
Yeah, I, I'm going to take some prerogative here as the mayor. This needs to end, we need to make a plan to do something else, it's, it's just personally, I, my energy is exhausted at this point in time. So I don't know what you wanna do, but.
Would you like us to schedule a special meeting to be able to have more of just this kind of dialogue?
Sure.
We'll have Melissa reach out to you, see what the availability is. We could either do that before the eighteenth meeting, or we could do it after the eighteenth, and adopt, we could use the eighteenth for this discussion, and then have a special meeting to adopt the budget after the eighteen.
I would prefer before the eighteenth, I don't know how the rest of you feel about it.
I prefer after, I think if we use the eighteenth, which is a regular meeting where the public can be involved if they want to, and we can hash out a good portion of this, and those items on the eighteenth that you can defer to another meeting, and free up as much time on the eighteenth as you can. And then our special meeting after the eighteenth will be a, be a very quick meeting to adopt the budget.
Okay.
That's how I would suggest.
Mark, Melissa, Josh, do you see any concerns about that approach?
No, that would be fine.
So be it.
Councilman Harold and that issue, Vice Mayor, how do you feel about that? Sagala?
Again, I, I would just recommend that, that if any other council member has anything to put in, I mean, I, I spent, you know, I spent about five or six hours going through the budget, trying to analyze it, trying to see what was last year and this year. You know, and just to clarify, I know that, well, the public's pretty much gone, but I had put together some requests. But in terms of, I'll give you an example, in terms of, you know, increasing the graffiti abatement, the weed abatement, and the books, I couldn't, I couldn't give you any specific numbers, because we don't have that detail in this budget. Last year, we had in the graffiti abatement, you know, four thousand dollars that was set aside for overtime. I know, and maybe the chief, chief of police can see that there has been a lot more graffiti than I've noticed on the west side, so my, my idea was to increase it and give you specifics, but I couldn't do that, because I didn't have the information, so.
Okay, well, if we could just table that till the next meeting. Can we just forego the rest of the agenda, or do I have to do the rest of the agenda?
No, I think, I think very quickly we can deal with item fifteen.
Okay, future agenda items?
I, I would be in favor of Mr. Harold's request, I've asked Mario about that before, and I've told, I know I've been told that too bad you can't do anything, but I think it's worth having a discussion.
Discussion on it.
Okay, I, does everyone agree with that? Okay, then, can we forego staff reports?
You're the mayor.
Thank you. Then we will adjourn this regular meeting.